Call to order this July 12th Committee of the Hall of Common Council. And in calling the meeting to order, I would also like to remind. I would also just like to remind the public that for special meetings of council such as this committee of the hall. There is no public comment. Members of the public have anything they want to share with council, they can certainly email. Email us. I also want to acknowledge that we have a guest tonight, Dr. Ian Coyle, who is the consultant who has presented to council. A few weeks ago last month. And he is with us tonight as we begin our discussion. I know at one point this was advertised as a special budget meeting, however, it is a meeting where we are focusing on a good bit of what must be done as we move forward with the city manager position. So, welcome Ian, so glad you can join us tonight.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
And the sound okay on your end?
Yep, I can hear you loud and clear. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. All right, we're going to begin tonight. This special order of business discussing salaries and we will start with a discussion of the city manager. And let me say that I have sent out a number of emails to council today. And my apologies that I was sending some material today, it's been an unusually busy and hectic week, actually two weeks, so my apologies for sending. Sending information today, but the discussion about city manager. Salary will also be informed a great deal, in fact, be led by Ian Coyle. We have benchmarking from other municipalities. We wanted to make sure that we were sharing accurate information. Some of the information from other municipalities was sourced from ICMA. Some sourced from other city managers themselves. So we did not want to inundate people's counsel. We certainly did not want to share information that was not current and accurate. So Ian, in talking about the salary ranges for city manager, I wonder if I could turn it to you first for some of the information that you have gathered in your reviews.
Sure, be happy to. So what I thought I would do is just sort of review what I'm seeing and maybe just an objective analysis of where I think if if I was to be asked to make any recommendations, where I I think the council should be in terms of of a pay range and sort of give you some context as to where I came up with that. Would that be okay? Or would you like me to do something different?
No, that would be perfect. Thank you.
All right, so to just sort of set the table, I think you're you're at that last point in time of the search process, the last interval or the last phase or segment where you're talking about a search committee, you're talking about salary. So you know, those are the the final pieces, I guess you could say, the finishing touches in order to basically go, you know, full bore with a recruitment process to try to then source and eventually place someone in the position of city manager. So I think that I would start by saying that that at the end of the day, the council needs to be comfortable with what they're going to pay the individual regardless of, you know, what I say or think. So you need to be comfortable with that, no matter what that what that is. So let me just start there. Bluntly speaking, I think that the number needs to be higher than some of the numbers that I that I've at least seen thrown around with some of the materials that I've seen in the run up to where we are today, like some of the exchanges that were had in the the run up to the discussion about the city manager and the chief of staff pay and what the mayor was going to make and things of that nature. So let me just give you a little bit of context of where I'm coming from. So New York and the Northeast in particular are a little bit under where I think you would see nationally the trend going for what city managers make. If you were to pull up a how a search of existing present searches of city managers with a population size of ificas and a budget size of ificas. You will likely have a range that carries with it a a top end range in the $200,000 range. New York State presently, when you look at a survey of about a dozen city managers, so we have, of course, village and town and county, but specifically speaking for city managers and council manager former government. The New York State average, looking at those numbers, is about $160,000. There's a low of 120, 125 ish. It's about 123.5 and there's a high of between 250 and 270,000. Now that is the city of New Rochelle, which has a population of 81,000. So you know, those are just some, you know, numbers as far as where New York State sits. I will say that the city manager market itself right now in 2023 and sort of we're we're looking to find someone who will be starting in 2024, but just for just for looking at 2023. And I said this a little bit at the last time we met, it's ultra competitive. It's changed, it's changed drastically in the years post COVID, especially as it does relate to pay. ICMA was mentioned, so just let me refresh that. The International City County Management Association, which you have had some data in your process to investigate the the benefits of a city manager or a council manager former government. That is the professional association of city, town, borough, village, county administrator managers. It's about 10,000 plus members. They're not all city managers. You know, dominated by, I would say, kind of small to medium sized cities and city managers. So that's the professional association group of of people that are practicing city managers across the country. Unfortunately, they are not regularly doing a salary report and analysis like they used to do many years ago. I think they're due to update that, but I would like to just speak to that briefly before moving on to my next point. The ICMA put together a report, it included 1,120 municipalities. It was 2018 data, so that's my first asterisk. That was a in the segment of population that Ithaca was in, the median manager pay was $165,000, again nationwide. Adjusted for inflation, that does put the number over in the 200 to 205,000 dollar range as a as a top end range. Or a range period. The council, I think, needs to factor in some things of the cost of living in Ithaca, sort of what I call the the kind of micro economy, the cost of housing, things like that. Looking at college towns, incidentally, I've I've had an individual inquire of me about the position in a couple of different states that actually two individuals have just seen the 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 news reports and are potentially interested in the position and they're both, you know, very attractive candidates. They are looking in the range of probably 175 to 210,000 dollars based on either what they make right now or what they're being recruited for. I sort of tried to ground truth a little bit this very objectively with some sitting sitting city managers in New York State who are not interested in the position. All with experience, all with MPAs, well respected in the profession to sort of ground truth my assumptions and and guesses here. They were not told what I was seeing in the range. All believe that that needed to be a much higher number than what was being floated previously. So that's sort of where I think that the number sits in a nutshell. A couple of references are made in the in the publications that I've seen that the number would be slightly more than the chief of staff pay, which I think was like around 120. I've seen a number of around 160. So again, I I I guess I apologize if it's sticker shock, but I also want to be very transparent and truthful to you as far as what I see in the marketplace where I think it is competitive wise. Where I see Ithaca trying to attract a a national you know, search, you know, I think that you to attract national searches, it's not just necessarily benchmarking to New York. Well, I think that is indeed important. I think it's also benchmarking to where the position needs to be from a really a a national profile, because I think that's what you'll be searching for and from in terms of a pool and a candidate mix. I also think that you know, when we look at numbers and things like this, and it's easy for me to say as the outside individual, you have to sort of own the process, you have to be comfortable with it, you have to be able to speak to your constituent base about what you're paying or not paying, you know, this this position, right? But I look at it like, you know, the candidate pool, I think that's going to be attracted at the higher end of that range. Will more than make up the difference of what that on an absolute dollar value basis, that difference is, whether it be 40,000, whether it be 50,000, whatever that difference is. Annually, I would think that that individual with their capabilities, with their ability to drive efficiencies, do great work. I think they're going to make up that number many times over. And also, I think I would encourage you to look at that number as juxtaposed against the, you know, the size of the budget, the size of the population. So if I was looking at this strictly objectively, looking at the competition, looking at how things have changed. I think that range needs to be somewhere in that with at least having a top end range, if you're not comfortable with that particular number in that neighborhood of 200,000 plus dollars. And I'd be happy to answer any questions specifically about the city manager pay and where I think that is at this point in time.
Thank you. And you said this Ian, but just to reiterate. Couple of the factors that you have mentioned in even presenting this range are cost of living, cost of housing, the current market for city managers, from what I recall you saying, there are a number of city manager searches going on right now. So it is a competitive market for such positions. I will turn it over to colleagues for questions, comments, Robert?
This is more of a question for our working group colleagues from the process three years ago. I'm just kind of curious if people could expand upon where you all got the idea of slightly more than the city manager, the chief of staff? If at in 2018, it was $165,000 as the median pay? Just because just because that's what we told the public when we went to referendum. So I'm just curious to see how the discrepancy arose.
I will turn it over to two members who were on that that task force, and those are Rob Gerhard and Donna Fleming. I will say that proposal and figures from 2018. That is a significant time lapse from 2018 to current and inflation has been pretty serious. So let me turn it over.
May I just clarify though, because I I agree with what you just said. At the time, the the city, the chief of staff salary was only 120,000. This is a 40, 30 to 40% increase effective 2018. So I I'm with you that there's inflationary pressures that we have to reconcile with. I'm just curious how we were off with data that were three years old at the time.
So I I'm not sure I remember the details of how we collected that particular information. I would love to have had Ian Coyle with us back then when we were doing this kind of work to help us sort through that data. So it's quite possible we didn't really understand Ithaca's position in that market against other markets and maybe didn't go to the mid or high range of what those average salaries were. I don't, I I'm not sure what you mean by what we told the public about about a number.
I mean, only in so much as that the memo that Ian just cited says that we will pay the city manager expectedly slightly more than the chief of staff. Right? Like that that was the.
So, okay, so so, yeah, I guess slightly might have been an inappropriate way to lead into that, but it is more than we would be paying the chief of staff. And I think that was understood. But I'll ask Donna if she has any better recollections of that specific number at that time.
No, I don't. I I do remember that we talked quite a bit about this being budget neutral in the sense that the one person would make more and the other person would make less, namely the mayor. Perhaps we failed to do thorough market research, but I then I had thought that the salary would be roughly 140, 150, something like that. So yes, I'm very surprised by the 200 number.
Cynthia?
I think obviously the the world had gone through a dramatic change between the time this was envisioned and the numbers we have now. And obviously, the financial situation and inflation was nowhere near. I mean, if you told someone three years ago that we'd be facing inflation of eight, nine percent. I think most people would have thought it crazy. But that being said, I do recognize that the chief of staff is assistant to the mayor and only has the responsibilities and authorities designated to them by the authorities vested in the mayor. As the chief executive officer of this organization who has in their discretion and their responsibility, they take on the liability and obligations of the entire city as well as the departments themselves. Whether or not we're talking about the issuing of debt, whether or not we're talking about the regulation of facilities that have direct impact on people's physical health, their environmental health, you know, obviously the safety and well being of the community. It does seem appropriate that a city manager would make more than a chief of staff. You know, who who only has limited liability and isn't actually making, they're not an elected official, they're not making decisions on behalf of of the municipality. So I think it's absolutely reasonable that it's higher. Being said, again, a lot of factors different between now and 2018 that we're all facing.
All right.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I just do want to clarify, Cynthia, I used the word liability a few times there. I assume you don't mean that in the legal and financial literal sense. Because I do want to clarify that the city manager, like any other city official, would enjoy defense and indemnity from the city itself for most any claims against them. It's the particulars are actually spelled out in the city charter.
Thank you for that clarification. I am also recognizing, however, in terms of, for example, a chief officer or chief operator of a water and wastewater treatment plant can personally go to jail depending on how that that facility is administered. So while I recognize they do have protections bestowed upon them because of the the legal defense offered them by the city, I do recognize that the responsibility that the city has and those decisions that the cities make does come with maybe not personal.
Professional weight is what you professional and political liability, but not financial or legal liability.
Right.
By and large.
Thank you.
Yeah, I I will point out as Cynthia has indicated, the city manager will be the CEO of a complex organization with 400 plus employees with department heads to be overseen with labor contracts that the city manager would be part of negotiating with budgets to be built. So it is a very involved and responsible position and the task group in 2018, I think, did a good job of looking at the duties and responsibilities to peg at that date, though, at that time in 2018. Specifics around salary, I think, had to have been challenged. It is clear and the task group did indicate that city manager would be paid more than the chief of staff. The chief of staff salary is currently in the 130 range. So this city manager role will have greater authority and responsibility to work closely with with common council directly.
Can I just make one point? Sorry to interrupt and interject with the council discussions, but because make this one point on the on this comment that actually kind of like the both Rob questioned and the other Rob commented on. Yes, the ICMA data was was available, it would have been searched for, it would have been there probably for the taking. I I'm guessing without relying too much on the grander level detail of what was available at that point in time from places like NICOM or surveying just New York, New York State only municipalities with a CM former government. Knowing that those New York local governments at this point in time have an average of around $160,000. It wouldn't have surprised me back then that that average might have been, you know, 135, 140, something like that as a blended average. So that that would have probably led someone to make a comment that, you know, probably not much more than we're paying at this point in time. That all being said, you know, the the fast forward button, I think, has to be pressed. And it has to be that, you know, where are we today? And, you know, minimally in New York State, I can tell you that the average is somewhere in that number. I can tell you that adjusted for inflation, those numbers look like that. I think if other places with a size that you're in and the population you're in are going to be recruiting, they're likely going to be recruiting at that higher number. Those are just some of the final points I wanted to make on just that one segment of discussion.
Phoebe?
I am glad I wasn't here in 2018. For one, I'm not excited about a city manager, not in the least. And I applaud y'all for all the work that you've done. But I think what is not in consideration is, once again, we're talking about taking money from a budget, still paying a chief of staff, a mayor, a city manager, unless y'all get rid of the mayor and the city and the chief of staff. And then we could talk about that kind of money. So I'm just like, I'm 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 just feeling here again, we're going to have someone. And maybe this is my personal stuff of, once again, we're going to have someone paid all this money. And I I I don't know, I'm gonna keep sitting on it because I'm not comfortable with the city manager and I wasn't here. And I wasn't a part of the studies that y'all did and how important it is for a city manager and stuff like that. But yeah, so I'm having some uncomfortability. I'm having some uncomfortability with $250,000. When we when we heard this budget is not really a great, our budget this year is not going to be that great unless is greater than y'all really telling us. All of that being taken in consideration is is like, okay, and we still getting how much thousand dollars? But so I'm saying is all that being taken in consideration about when when, I don't know, I I I just thought that these kind of jobs is something that people come with their heart and they really like doing this kind of job, but I guess, no, it's the number.
Well, Phoebe, let me let me clarify two points. One, as we move to this structure of city government with with thunder, with a council and city manager, there will not be a chief of staff. So there is not that redundancy. That's one one important thing. So there's not that additional layer. The city manager will be the CEO. And the rate, you you mentioned $250,000. I wasn't hearing that number. Ian, did you? Did you?
No, I I I think what Phoebe was referencing, when I referenced the individual city manager salaries of those New York State cities with a city manager, one of those which is New Rochelle, is in that range, that probably what she, I think what she meant.
And that's not the range that I believe we will be looking at. What I heard Ian suggest is that council would want to consider a range and the top of that range being in the $200,000. So two key points. No, no, that's the high end. That's the high end. Plus benefits. Yes. Well, not only did council vote for it, it was put to a public referendum. Yeah. Jorge?
Yeah, no, I I I appreciate the work that was done to to get us to this point. And I understand that we were, there were a lot of unforeseen circumstances. You know, that led us to this point of not having the most accurate and up to date information, but I can't help but feel that that we are in a very precarious situation in terms of I don't I don't think that if the public was aware of what we would be looking at in terms of of costs for the city manager, I don't think that would have changed whether a referendum would have passed or not, but I do believe that there would have been more pause for concern or pause for discussion for a lot of folks who voted in favor of this. And I can't help but feel that a lot, there's going to be a lot of frustration over a lot of people feeling that they weren't making the most informed of decisions when they went to go vote for this. And I think we were hoping to accomplish creating as much transparency as possible. And I don't mean to be like a Monday morning quarterback here and and suggest that folks should have navigated things that they couldn't foresee, like the like the pandemic and whatnot and and the inflation that we're dealing with. But that range is 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 not what we were anticipating. And I can't help but feel that you know, as myself as a member of council, but also as a member of the public, that this wasn't exactly what we were billing.
George, Rob, Phoebe? George?
Yeah, this is more money than we were thinking. But it is what it is. And if we want a good city manager, we're gonna have to pay the freight. But part of that city manager's manager's job will be to save money for the city. So that's the goal. It's not just the salary.
Rob, Phoebe, Cynthia?
So I understand the concern. Yeah, I wish we had a crystal ball when we were we're making these pitches to the public. But I I think George's point is important. Dr. Coyle brought that up as well, that the intent for having this former government is that will be more efficient as a city municipal organization. And that has some savings right there. I don't, we also shouldn't take this out of context, right? So we still have yet to have the conversation about how much salary our mayor will make. So when we look at a combination, we may not be far off depending on where we land with that. So I think it's important to keep those things in mind. And let's be clear on another thing, too. These numbers are big for all of us, even those who of us who did some study of this. And partly they're big for the same reason we probably have a sticker shock around our next police chief and our next controller and our next, you know, HR person. I think all of these positions that we're going to have to replace in the near future are probably going to cost us, well, probably cost us more than they had. And maybe more than we believe they should, but that's the reality of our organization with the size of our budget, the size of our organization in terms of number of employees and how we negotiate with them. There's a, there's a lot going on here, and I think that's an important thing to keep in mind. And I agree. I wish that someone would come to this with heart. But we also need people with experience and that costs money.
Yeah, thanks, Rob. Well said.
And credentials, not just experience, but.
Well said, and I am glad that you put it in the context of other searches that we will be engaged in this year. We have a number of senior level positions and we have to be looking at the current market, not the market when someone started their position a number of years ago, not the market when was pre pandemic and pre inflation that has had a deep, deep impact on our municipality as well as others since 2018. So thank you for that, Rob. I think Phoebe and then Cynthia?
Oh, I wanted to apologize because I really do understand. Oh, I wanted to apologize because I really do understand now, there won't, you know, there, it, there will be money. Um, in, in the budget, if we don't have a chief of staff, that will, that, that, that frees up some money. It also, it also just scared me again, thanks, uh, reminding that we will be having some big ticket item money. For people who are leaving, you know, tho- so I'm just thinking in my head of, of, of. Hoping that the city manager will be able to help save. Yeah, so I apologize. Yeah.
No, thanks. Actually, I, I appreciate you asking that question because I want it to be completely clear and transparent for, for the public. And the market we're in right now is a very, very different market. And we as an organization want to be able to attract the best people. Who will have the, um. The objective of working efficiently and effectively within city government. And being responsive to our departments, to our residents, to our taxpayers. Uh, so there is, I believe, benefit that will come, uh, financial benefit. That will come from hiring the best people in these key positions. City manager being at the top of the list of key positions. I had Cynthia and them back, or Rob, did you have something on that point?
Just one quick thing, Cynthia, if it's okay with you. Um, I just want to clarify one point because we've, we've talked about, um, how we have a expectation that the city manager will help the city be efficient and save money. But I want to clarify for my colleagues as well as this public. And mostly for my colleagues sitting in the back of the room, Steve Thayer, who is one of those positions we're gonna need to replace and big shoes to fill. Who has done an amazing job of being very efficient with the city resources. So I, I don't want to imply that that hasn't happened. It's just that we have even greater expectations, but so thank you, Steve, for your work.
Yes, thanks very much, Rob, for interjecting that. Thank you. Uh, Cynthia?
Thank you. I, I think we've all recognized the, the benefits that a professional city manager will bring. To our increasingly complex and dynamic organization. Uh, to have that level of professionalism, to have an individual who brings with them both consistency over time. And regardless of elected officials that come in and out with different policy objectives and so on. Because as we know, you can have eleven new managers every two years that is going to take the city in different, uh, directions. And so to be able to have, um, that continuity and that long-term vision that will oversee our operations is, is essential. Um, I think one of the things that we also have to recognize is, um. We also, as an organization, have gone through ups and downs. And it has been our staff that has carried the burden of us trying to navigate. The financial crash of two thousand eight, um, slowly reinvesting in our public works after years of, uh. Deferred maintenance and neglect, um, our, our management, our department heads, our council and the mayor. As you can see, have not had salary increases. Usually they carry the cost as we try to, um, make sure that we have a reasonable. Uh, tax rate. And so to a certain extent, our municipal department heads, our, our staff. Across the board are not being paid market wages. And so now as we are looking to replace them, attract and retain staff. We are facing that sticker shock of, uh, not keeping up with, uh, market wages during this time. So as difficult as this is, I think it's essential. We, we all take great pride in our organization. And I think we want to attract the best and brightest and, and keep them.
Yeah, thank you, Cynthia. Robert?
Thank you. Um, I just wanna, in the, in the same spirit as Rob's comment, uh, to, to staff in the room about, um, financial management and Cynthia's. I want to be very clear, uh, I appreciate Ian's clarification about the data from NICOM and things like that. I don't at all suggest, I mean, I do support us paying whatever we need to, to get the best person for this job. I just was confused as to how our data didn't align.
Thank you, Rob. Uh, Ian, did you have any additional points, any responses to any of the comments from council members?
Um, no, I mean, I think the, the points made are, are valid. Um, I, I, I believe, you know, particularly, uh, you know, Jorge's comment about, um, you know. Having some challenge internally that, that, that maybe we as a city or you as a city kind of went out with, with X and, and, uh. It still would be supportive nonetheless. I, I think the, it's a, it's a very fair point, it's a valid point, it's a valid, you know, uh, qualm. Uh, I, I think the, I guess the answer you could say is the, the dynamics certainly have changed, even, even to the time that you did that report. You know, the dynamics have changed. Uh, there has been kind of a level setting or right sizing and, um, I'm not saying the trajectory is like this. But the direct trajectory did go, you know, up, uh, as far as where these, uh, positions are being paid and how they're being paid. Uh, in terms of where, in terms of the level and the dollar amount, so, um, but no, I mean, uh, all fair points and, and good commentary and, you know, um. Really for the purposes of recruitments in general, no matter what number you would kind of settle on or center on. Um, I strongly recommend, uh, dollars and I strongly recommend, you know, a range, um, and, and having it. Having to sort of be very transparently placed, uh, in that so individuals know what, uh, you know, what they might be walking into from a compensation perspective. I just have one, one little thing to, to share with Phoebe. I, I think that the, it may seem that way because of that large dollar amount. But, um, I think you find a lot more public service motivation oriented individuals in this profession. Then you do compensation motivation oriented people in this profession. So I think certainly we're trying to find the people that are, uh, oriented towards, you know, the value of the work and, and, and the profession of. Public management as opposed to, you know, dollar chasers and the like. So, uh, you know, just wanted to make a, just a comment on that. I know where you're coming from, but just to. Where, where, or I, I would be coming from, from the recruitment perspective is trying to make sure that, you know, uh, we're finding those types of people.
Thank you, Ian. Other comments from council members? Do we want to, uh, as a council, do you as council want to offer? Your thoughts on, uh, salary range? And as people think about that question, Ian, could I ask you what, um. What amount of flexibility or amount of range would you suggest? Not the actual ranges, but you know, uh, twenty thousand, thirty thousand, thirty-five thousand dollar range. What would you suggest?
Uh, probably in the lower thresholds of those numbers that you just rattled off, or I mean, probably in the twenty to twenty-five thousand dollar range. So, I mean, again, if it was posed, I would think that a, you know, that range of a hundred and seventy-five to two hundred-ish would be. Appropriate, given what I've heard at least from some of the commentary from council.
Hey, that's helpful. Thank you.
Is that including, uh, the package, health and insurance and all that? That's not.
That's not including benefits.
That's not including benefits.
You're right.
Benefits do cost.
Yes.
Absolutely.
It should be included in there, like, and if we talk in transparency.
Yeah, I, I can speak to that from the purposes of a recruitment that, um. Nine times out of ten, it will reference a, a salary. And it'll say, you know, inclusive or i- in addition to, the candidate will be afforded a, a benefit package of X. And I know certainly there's, uh, a discussion on, you know, the, the employment agreement particulars of what you often find in, in that type of a package. But yeah, I mean, certainly health insurance, participation, the New York state retirement system, you know, afforded time off and, and those type of things. In addition to whatever, you know, your, your selected candidate may be inquiring of, uh. On top of that, I, I, I wouldn't know, but yeah, I mean, certainly that, and it's, it's hard, I understand the, the comment, it's hard to. You know, quantify those things and I, I think it's just an expectation that those will be afforded a full-time salary CEO of the, of the, of the city.
Billy, did you have any comments?
First, sorry, sorry, for, for councils deliberation, the terms of like total cost and transparency. You know, one hundred percent, yes, you, you, you need to be comfortable, you know, going in knowing that it is, say the number is, you know, two hundred. It's two hundred plus the seven point six five percent. Steve can start railing them off, you know, the FICA social security, the retirement system participation rate. The average cost of the health insurance plan, things of that nature, which, which goes with it, any, you know, full-time equivalent employee of the city.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, valid points about the fringe, uh, package and that is a real cost. George?
It, it's, it, it's important to me that, uh. They should get the benefits that other city employees get, but they shouldn't have a big cherry on top with extra benefits.
Yeah, and I was actually just about to, um, interject with, uh, a point much along those lines, which is that, um, uh, when we get to item, uh, agenda item. To be tonight, um, uh, which is the template employment agreement, um, uh, we can discuss what's in there. But, uh, but the short version of it where fringe benefits is concerned is that it specifies that the city manager, um, would receive the same fringe benefits. As, uh, the managerial, um, staff of the city generally do. So it would be, um, uh, the same in the vast majority of those respects. That would be the, that would be the starting point in the template.
Yes, Donna.
The numbers that Ian just told us a few minutes ago, do we have that in writing anywhere, the comp numbers? Did? The numbers you just rattled off, Ian, do we have that in writing anywhere?
Um, I have them, uh, right in front of me on like a file that I had produced in the preparation of this meeting. I, I, which I certainly can share.
Yeah, yeah, I need to stew on it for a while.
So Ian, do you want to, um. Circulate those, those numbers? I know that there was some back and forth on, um, averages and numbers from different municipalities. And we did want to make sure that we weren't sharing out of date information, uh, you know, in response to points that have been made already. Um, so Ian, if you have the most current, uh, salary comparisons, if you could share that with us. And apologies if you did already and it, uh, slipped my radar.
Yeah, I will certainly do that.
Okay, thank you. We do not have this as a, um, voting item tonight. But I would like to suggest, uh, that council come to some agreement on the range. What I'm hearing tonight, uh, and that there would be a resolution in the August. Um, council packet. So one of the concerns that other members of council have expressed is, here it is July, mid-July, we're talking about. Uh, the August council meeting. We want to move as, um, expeditiously as possible on this search. There are other searches going on, uh, you know, as Ian has shared elsewhere. And we don't want to be missing out on the strongest possible candidates. So I was hearing some sticker shock agreed. However, some, uh, range in the one hundred seventy-five to two hundred thousand. Recognizing that does not include fringe. Robert?
Um, certainly, it's July. I want to just turn us back to Donna's point, though, like, I, for my own part, I'm not going to support any range. Without actually seeing any data. We, like, I appreciate this, but like, we, we have, as council, no, no data to reference. To support this whatsoever, right? I would like to be able to have some time to reflect on that. And get a sense from, you know, I know that North Carolina has city managers that have huge municipalities that are, you know. I know Texas has, so I, I would just like to get a sense of the landscape. I, Ian, I appreciate what you're sharing with us. But it would be nice from a financial responsibility standpoint for me to be able to see those data.
Sure, thank you. Uh, so Ian, will you be able to share that information? We'll get that out to council very soon and that can be, uh, used as. In our discussions on August second. Sound okay?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
All right, thank you, Ian. Uh, the next item on the agenda is, uh, discussion of mayor salary. Um. And here I just wanted to pause for a minute, um. Rob, do you intend to recuse yourself of that, from that discussion?
No. Ari, do I need to recuse myself legally?
Um. Uh, recusal where it creates an appearance of conflict is, um. Required by our code, a determination as to whether, um, that's the case in any given context, um, for a council member. Ultimately, is a determination that the council member needs to make themselves.
I would suggest. That it would be more appropriate to recuse yourself.
Sure, yeah.
So we can, uh, text you at the end of that discussion if you wanted to be in the second floor conference room. Thank you. As was indicated in the earlier discussion when we're talking about, um, city manager. And as was, uh, understood by the, uh, task group, task force in twenty eighteen. The, there would be an increase in the city manager salary. There would be, uh, decrease in the mayoral compensation. And that would be a reflection of the significant difference in responsibilities. As we've said, the city manager will be the CEO of this large and complex organization. Uh, you have actually in tonight's packet. Um, and this is one of the things that was in the packet. Um, you have a memo from twenty eighteen, I believe. That also, um, indicates the, the responsibilities or powers of the mayor. Current and then under council manager government, which is what we are moving toward. A council manager government and you see the responsibilities. Um, currently and under the new form of government, where that responsibility will rest. The responsibility resting in large part with the city manager. Uh, and that I believe then would be reflected in the compensation. So, um, once again, Ian, if I could ask you to share just verbally. Some of, uh, the benchmarks you've seen on mayoral compensation.
Yeah, so I, I can certainly do that. Uh, the uniqueness with which you find yourself in is that, um. I, I, I'm not able to find an example of where there was, uh, you know, the, the status change. So the, the movement from the council manager, or excuse me, from a strong mayor to a council manager. So the, the mayor had some inherent powers and responsibilities that were, you know, removed or lessened and some remained. And they were, you know, provided to a different position holder, uh, but I can tell you that, um, in terms of. So I went to NICOM, um, and, and they had some available information. Uh, this was a little bit more all over the map, I will be honest with you, um, and certainly to the, to the question of Donna. Um, likewise, um, I will share, uh, the information that I was able to obtain. Um, I've, uh, also, let me tell you that the sort of availability of that benchmark data on a national basis is not available. Because ICMA is really serving the city management ranks and, and the mayor ranks would probably be more of a National League of Cities data point. That, uh, I was not able to access at this point in time, but just to rattle off, um, some regional, uh, with. S- s- specific to the state and council manager former government, um, and I'll share this with you, but Almyra. form of government, and I'll share this with you, but Almira, 12,000, Corning, 8,500, Cortland, which is gravitating towards a council manager form of government, but it still remains, or a particularly strong mayor for, for a government, 25,000, Geneva, 7,500, Auburn, 11,000, Newburgh, 15, Oniata, 12,000, Watertown, 17,750. There's a couple outliers, like, for example, the city of Poughkeepsie shows 90, 9-0, $90,000. The city of New Rochelle, again, it's inflated with Westchester County, per se, shows 100,000. I'm not sure what the mayor does or does not do there. And then there's like the city of Sherrill, which is a small city in New York with a, with a council manager former government at 1,500, Canandaigua at 8,500. So you can see it's a little bit of a mixed bag there.
Excuse me, just one, one minute, sorry, Ian. Robert just came back indicating that he is using not to recuse.
Clarifying, I'm not going to recuse myself because council members vote on their own salaries as well when there's an increase or decrease, so I don't see how there's a conflict.
As I said, it's a determination that the council, each council member needs to make
Okay, shall I continue?
Please.
Okay. So, again, basically, you know, more of a mixed bag. I mean, you had some salaries that were in the, you know, under 10,000 range. You had some salaries in the, you know, 15 to 25. And then you had a few outliers that were beyond that from the council manager form of government cities in New York State that would, I, I would think would be sort of in a peer group as a comparison. So that's what the data shows on the mayoral salaries. Again, with that asterisk that I was not able to find one that, that did the transfer or the change and sort of, you know, where, where it went versus where it was. So that's what I can say there.
Thank you. And, and again, if you have that chart, and apologies if you sent it and it fell off my plate, but if you could share any of that data that you have, Ian. What I do have, and I believe shared with council, albeit late this afternoon, is the salary history of elected officials that gives the common council compensation dating from 1996 up to 2022, also indicates the mayoral compensation, which I will point out for the public right now, the mayor's salary is $61,489. I will point out that the mayor is currently the CEO of the organization with all the responsibility for departments, department heads, labor negotiations, overseeing and being involved in that, and the development of budgets. So that compensation reflects the responsibilities of the mayor in our current structure as, as the CEO. The current common council compensation is $13,141. That was not increased for a number of years, however, is at that $13,000 now. So in one instance, I am thinking, and I'm interested in hearing colleagues' responses to this, the county legislature, there, there's some interest in the county administrators' role, responsibilities, compensation being somewhat, not exactly, but somewhat in keeping with the city's ranges. The chair of the legislature, is my understanding, receives compensation that is one and a half the time, times the compensation for county legislators. And I'm not suggesting that those salary numbers be exactly mirrored in, in our compensation. However, do we want to consider the mayor, who will not be the CEO of the organization and will have significantly different responsibilities? Do we want to think about the mayor's compensation being one and a half times common council's compensation? So I'll put that out there for comments, which would put it at about 20, yeah, which is the figure that was in, in my head. George, and then Duxson?
I'm going to shoot from the hip here. I like the idea of tying it to salary of common council. But I would note that the county ledge makes a lot more money than we do. I think the office of the mayor will continue to be one that requires quite a bit of time, business openings, et cetera. That's not something that the chair of the legislature does as much. So I would suggest that we tie, and we tie it to council, but make it, I'm going to say two and a half times, but two to two and a half times the salary of common council, which hopefully is going to be more next year.
Duxson?
Yeah, basically what George said, and I was also going to kind of ask us, you know, what we envision the mayor will do, what their responsibilities will be. Because, just thinking back, you know, thinking to Laura, thinking to Savante, the responsibilities outside of City Hall were still substantial, and they often, that's why you have backups, and so like, you often can't make everything, and just, the position still can feel very full-time. So, sorry, that's, I meant to ask the question and then answer it. So my answer is that it still feels very full-time. The responsibilities are, it's still going to be substantial. I don't, you know, I could bandy about a, a number of different numbers, although George's proposal seems very reasonable to me, meaning it's on the upper end of where I was thinking, because, yeah, I, I still, we're expecting the mayor not just to do ribbon cuttings and stuff, but to advocate for the city, both regionally and nationally, maybe internationally. You know, liaise with the many, many people who currently can't get on the mayor's calendar, or even my calendar for that matter, and I'm just a councilperson. Like, my expectations will be very high. You know, no offense to any prospective future mayors, but that's kind of where I'm at, in, in kind of wanting to set the expectation to be pretty high, and thus the compensation.
Thank you, Rob.
Yeah, I think Duck, I want to just echo, Duck makes a good point. We, we do find ourselves, because I think I want to cautious us, caution us in thinking that the way the mayor's role had been structured, it, that everything that was there is exactly how it gets translated to the city manager or to the mayor. Because I think we do want to have the ability for a mayor to maybe do some things that the role either didn't allow or just didn't have time for. So I don't want us to lose sight of the fact that it's not necessarily always going to be a, a one-to-one. Now, having said that, I, I do think it's important for us to keep this in check, that we, we do find the right balance. I, I'm, I haven't quite wrapped my head around, I, I like the idea of tying it to council salaries because I think that's, that happens in other examples. Probably some of the numbers that Ian noted might have been that. So I, but I don't know about the number yet. So I, I agree, George, whether it's two, 2.5, three, whatever it is, it's, we, we'll have to figure that out. But I would like to see some way of connecting that to the scope of things in the mayor's role. And I'll just make two other quick points, which is, one, I think we always intended, and, and I'm, and I'm sure that in some of the cases, what Ian noted, they may be mayors that are not elected as mayors, but they're elevated council members. And I think that's an important distinction for our, the intent of our model was that we wanted to retain a citywide elected mayor. And I think that is part of the reason why Duck and I, and maybe others, have this expectation of what that mayor's role would be. Because they were, you know, specifically had that in mind when they were running. And, and B, the other thing, and I wish I could remember where I just saw this. I think it was in reading some materials in preparation for this discussion, but I did note that there are some cities, I think with comparable size to ours, but they, their structure of council is different in that they have reps on council that represent specific sections of the city, like our wards. But then they have other citywide elected, like at-large representatives. And I noted in one example that those two reps got different salaries, that the citywide elected officials got a higher salary than the ward or, or section elected officials. For what it's worth, I don't say that, I'm not advocating for that. What I'm just saying is I think there are different ways to look at this.
On, on that point, Ian, do you have any experience with what Rob was just describing?
Yeah, I'm familiar with, I, I can't pinpoint the jurisdictions right now, but definitely familiar with that arrangement where you have at-large and you have district or ward-based, although I'm unfamiliar with the at-large council or board members being distinguished from a salary compensation perspective, but I'd have to look into that a little bit more.
Thank you. Phoebe, I saw your hand.
So I'm not going to agree with any of you. For one, I'm looking at, I kept hearing this part-time position, and $61,000 a year is quite a bit for a part-time position. For one, to me, and this is just me, and also, that position is going to even drop lower, right? That, that, to be saying that that person should get, I, I, and I don't do the percentage and stuff like that, but I think if they're not going to raise what I get, then I'm not looking at this whole, I, I don't know. The, for me, from what I'm understanding, what I'm hearing today, and I could be wrong, the mayor is going to be doing, sitting on the council with us, voting like us. And I got to remember, there are a lot of other responsibilities that we also have as liaison, as special committees, as, so maybe, so what I'm saying is, I don't, I don't, I'm not looking at seeing, so because the mayor get, will the mayor continue to get voted in the same way? Oh, yeah, that's right, that's right.
Mayor will still be an elected.
And be elected, but are, are, so I need to know what they will be doing. And so if it's about, you were saying, attending, I mean, ribbon cuttings and attending this and that kind of stuff like that, all of us do that, all right? And I'm not explaining myself as well as I, I think I should, but what I'm saying is, we get, what, I gotta look again, 13,000, right? And if the mayor gets, they double that, that's 26,000? Okay, so if I say 30,000 a year, what does that, that, that's what I'm looking at. If they, they get 30,000, if we, you know? That's what you were saying? See, I don't do percentage stuff, right?
So let me say it a different way.
Yeah.
Say, we give ourselves a raise this year to 15 grand a year. Twice that is 30,000.
Right.
And two and a half times that is 37,500.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I messed it all up, sorry, y'all.
Good calculator there in your head, George.
My grandfather could count eggs to infinity, just like that.
Robert, I, I will, in recognizing you, I, I will say that you are the de facto mayor in 2024.
Unless I win as a write-in.
There's an election and council vote on their own salaries when they raise them. Do you all recuse your, did, did, like, the, it's every, are you, are you Judy? Nice to meet you. Hi, I'm running for mayor, as you know. I don't think this is a, this is not a private transactional matter that has anything to do.
All right, I'll recognize you for whatever point you wish to make.
Yeah, the point I wish to make is I emailed colleagues a few weeks ago. I actually think that the best way to handle this issue looking forward is to explore creating a salary commission that is staffed by members of the public who can get a sense for how accessible their mayor and council members are, and recommend to the body what salary adjustments should happen in the future. I think that is a way to balance the need to ensure that public office remains accessible to as many people as possible, while also managing the uncomfortableness of having to deliberate these things.
And I will just point out that salaries of department heads and all staff in the city, these will be responsibilities of department heads and city manager. So when you're suggesting... I'm sorry?
Thank you for the opportunity to clarify. I'm recommending that a salary commission for elected officials only. There are some out, there are some other states, I, I think I've emailed about a couple of municipalities that do this elsewhere around the country, not, of course, our civil service employees.
So a non-elected salary commission that would make recommendations on council salaries? Donna, I think I saw your hand earlier, and then George.
I, I think the role of mayor is one that can, that can expand a lot if one wants to. So I think it's, I think we have to decide how much time it would take to do what I think are the most important jobs of the mayor, and that is to organize common council, to preside over common council, to serve as a strong liaison between common council and the city manager, to serve as a liaison with other municipalities, to advocate as needed in Albany and maybe occasionally in Washington DC. But I, I think for the most part, I want there to be a lot less drama with the role of the mayor than there has been historically. And I, I really want the city manager and the mayor to stick to the knitting and make sure that the city of Ithaca runs smoothly and fulfills our, our vision and our mission of the, what we want it to be. So, so yes, a mayor could go to infinite ribbon cuttings and go to Albany every week and, and meet with all 30,000 residents of the city of Ithaca, but, and, and that would be an 80-hour-a-week job, but is that what we want? And to me, it's not, it's not what we want. I think that it's, it would be reasonable, like the 26 to $30,000 range, for somebody to do roughly double the work of what we expect ourselves to do. That's what I think would be in keeping with the changes that we're trying to make.
Thank you. George, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, just real.
And then Jorge.
Donna, that's amen. I'll just say, to Rob's point, I understand wanting to get the public involved in as much as possible, but to me, with respect, that sounds like, at best, too many cooks, and at worst, just a cluster.
In terms of constituent services, I would ask if that is not indeed the responsibility of alderperson, at least that was how I treated it as an alderperson. Jorge?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, no, I think a lot of, a lot of, I agree with a lot of what's been said. I like, I really do agree with and find myself aligned with George's sentiment that we should tie the mayor's salary to council. I think we are hoping, what we are hoping to accomplish is have the mayor be a more involved member of the legislature and the legislative process within the city as we relegate a lot of the administrative and logistic aspect, logistical. Uh, within the city as we relegate a lot of the administrative and logistic aspect, logistical aspects of the mayor's that is currently to the city manager. And so it would make sense that they would be in line with what we, um, you know. Relative to being essentially an at-large member of council um are making currently. Um, and so I think that makes sense. Um, I would be interested in pursuing just here what the public believes we should. You know, be paid. I personally believe we all deserve a raise and whatnot. It's very difficult to do this job. Um, and um, and we want to make sure specifically that this job is accessible. To folks who are on the lower income side of things and who are not typically found serving on this council. And so I believe all members of council and the mayor should receive, you know, compensation relative to that, and I do. Appreciate that with the city manager process, we're making the mayor a much more involved member of that council. And so it should be tied to that, in my opinion. So I agree with that. I'd be interested in exploring to hear what the public has to say. But I don't think it any means we bind ourselves to that, because I believe. We should, you know, we should have some insight into that, understanding that we as council want to make this job more accessible uh to folks in the city.
Donna?
Um, I went through a calculation that I went through several years ago when we had a similar conversation. So um, the current alderperson's salary is thirteen-one forty-one. The Tompkins County living wage is sixteen-sixty-one an hour. Um, so if we work on average fifteen hours a week, we're getting the Tompkins County living wage per hour. Um. An average fifteen hours a week, in my experience, is kind of reasonable.
Reasonable for a member of council, right? As as an average.
Average.
There are certainly times where depending on working groups, council members uh. End up with more perhaps than that there, e- especially in recent uh weeks. I know there are a number of council members who are serving on search committees, for example, and uh. Working groups, so there are times, but the average of fifteen, sixteen hours a week. That is the average that I remember from twenty-seventeen, I think.
I probably work in double I what I did in two thousand seventeen.
Sure.
And I got three words to knock that. Estimate out of the park, and that's reimagine public safety. That that took so much time, it's unbelievable.
Well, there are a number of working groups, George, that have taken a considerable amount of time and, yeah. Phoebe, you had your hand up.
Yeah, yeah, I I just have to uh say two things. For one, I I do way more than that time. Way more than that time. Um, fifteen hours. Way, I I do a lot more than that as a council person. If we want to look at just standing in the street, talking to some people, maybe two, three hours at a time, but anyway, not even yet. What I want to bring out is what has happened for many years is the people who sat on this board could afford that. The people we want to see began to be a part of this uh on this council. That is not going to really uh be okay for them, right? And and so that's my thinking. And so I think for many years, this has been considered a place where that would would um just compensate people from. That work. I don't need to say no more, other than what I would like this paid for people to be thinking. That this could be something that they can do. That's enough.
Okay.
Jorge.
You know, I think I I really do agree that, and I appreciate that there are, you know, that this is considered a part-time position. And that that, you know, that that comes with expectations for hours from work and whatnot. Yeah, and there are definitely times where like the work ebbs and flows. Um, you know, I definitely felt that in my first year on council. That I wasn't always doing, you know, a whole lot. I was doing learning and trying to figure out how things worked. But I could totally understand reasonably. Um, why it would be expected for us to do like fifteen, you know, hours, you know, a week as an average and stuff like that. The more and more I get involved, and I think I'm sure a lot of my colleagues would feel this way, as we get deeper and deeper involved, that comes out of our time. And I think that while this is a part-time position, it's also a position of public service. Um, that we were democratically elected to, and with expectations associated with that, that means we have to sometimes oftentimes. Uh, over-deliver on that, and so I believe that means it might be time to reassess those expectations. Um, that we as a city and as a as a body on council have held. About the viability of doing this job at the expected, at at the expected um. Hours and and compensation that's associated with it.
Thank you. Other comments on this? I I don't know that we necessarily have consensus, but I have heard. Council members suggesting that to tie the mayor's salary to. Council compensation is something that you want to uh explore. Duxin?
Um, I have a question. Um, to lower someone's elected salary, do we have to go to a referendum?
I, that's a good question. Um, the answer in this case is no. Um, uh, there are two circumstances under which a referendum is required to reduce an elected officer's salary. Uh, one of those is where you are um seeking to reduce it um during their term of office. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding of council deliberations tonight is entirely about January one onwards. Um, for the mayor's salary and and council salary. Um, uh, and um, and it's important, therefore, with respect to council salary, to note that. Um, all seats on common council will enter a new elected term come January one, which is not always true um at the end of any uh given year, but it is this year. Um, and then the other circumstance under which a referendum uh comes into play is where state law specifies. Um, an elected officer's um salary. Um, and uh, there is contemplation of lowering, and there there is an action seeking to lower it. Um, but neither of those situations apply here. Um, you can have a look at the municipal home rule law, section twenty-three. Um, if uh you're interested in in the particulars there, but that's the bottom line. Um, and the two particular sites in twenty-three for what I just referred to are. Um, twenties, uh, MHRL twenty-three sub-two E and two J.
Thank you. No, thank you for it, because that.
Thanks, alright. Yeah, good question. Thank you, Duck.
Uh, and I guess I should add, um, though, uh, on tonight's agenda, as I think, um. Agenda item one D is an update on legislative next steps, which um relates a little bit to what we were just talking about, so when we get there, I will um speak to that.
Alright, uh, so again, there's some consensus to tying mayoral compensation to council compensation. Council compensation is the next uh item on this agenda, as has been stated. Current compensation of council members is thirteen thousand one hundred. Any changes would be for the council. Uh, going forward in twenty-twenty-four, any of these salaries, obviously, for these positions, city manager, mayor. Uh, council are for implementing in twenty-twenty-four. One suggestion is that, and I think this was the question, George, if I'm not mistaken, that you had asked about there. Uh, is there a process, a procedure for reviewing common council compensation? And you'll recall, as others on council may, there was a number of years, there were a number of years where there was no increase. In council compensation, so I thought one of your questions, perhaps not the whole of your questions. But one was to establish a procedure whereby council uh compensation would be. Um, adjusted on an annual, say, uh, two percent increase for council annually. So that it wouldn't be a situation of council raising this as a question on some uh basis. Some timeframe.
I I never, I never said two percent. I.
No.
Um, I know that last time we studied this, um. I think Duck was involved, I was involved, uh, Dan Cogan was involved, and we. We did this average number and um. Actually, we did a few different average numbers, and the number I recall we came up with was fourteen and change. And um. This, last time we raised it, Savante had not put a raise in his budget. And we found some money right at the end, Steve Thayer found some money. Um, and I just moved to use that money to raise the salaries, and that's how we came up with thirteen. And change, and that was the first raise. Um, since uh the Civil War.
You mean two thousand sixteen?
No, it was, it was, I mean, in in two, two thousand sixteen, the raise was five hundred dollars. So. In keeping with simplicity. My field of expertise. Um. I I I say we should raise it to fifteen thousand anyway. Next year, and that covers, I mean, inflation's been significant. That probably doesn't cover inflation, but it's an easy number. Fourteen percent.
Robert.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I appreciate the simplicity angle, George. Um, I would draw council's attention to uh. Work that Dan Cogan did when he was chief of staff. Uh, and that Donna made reference to a few minutes ago about. Um, if we were gonna tie it to anything, it would make sense to me to be tied to whatever the adjusted uh living wage is in any given year. Again, it's like the recommended proposal for budget season. Again, I know, um, Ari can correct me if I'm wrong. I know we cannot. Pre-obligate ourselves to a set rate, so we'd have to, we'd have to ratify that in the budget process every year, but we could have potentially as. The starting point, whatever the Tompkins County living wage is in any given year uh to smooth some of those inflationary concerns.
Uh, r- right, council can certainly come up with a rule of thumb, I think is what you're asking. Um, and uh, and then budget, and then choose or not choose to to in fact budget for that rule of thumb in each budget cycle. That's definitely legal, yes.
Would, would we have to agree on the average number of hours worked to tie it to? That.
Nobody likes my number.
No.
Fifteen hours a week.
Phoebe.
I I um, I I have to ask, uh, can I go back for a moment? Because I want to ask, uh, George, a question of what, what did you mean by reimagining public safety, right? That's one, one question, because that kind of is a little unsettled with me. Um, did, what did you mean? Though they.
I mean, the the amount of work that we did.
And the minorities, people didn't even get paid for the work. So we did some work.
So what are you, are you saying that?
I I'm just, okay, I'm gonna leave it alone.
Please speak it one at a time and.
No, I just, I just was kind of saying what, I, we did a lot of work on that. But we's al- also been doing a lot of work on um. The jungle, a lot of, you know, um, I think what happened with reimagining public safety is not. We did a lot of work because we did a lot of delays in it. I don't know, I'm just feeling, yeah, I I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, rather, i- if I could.
Yeah.
Uh. In response to George's comment, what I offered is that members of council have served. And will be serving on a number of task forces, uh, working groups. We've just heard from two members of the city manager task force from twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Um, council members are also asked to serve on search committees for department heads. So I I think when Jorge said the ebb and flow of council members. Can at times make it challenging to come up with an average of hours worked. However, the average that was gathered in twenty eighteen was fifteen hours. We we were all asked to um keep track of. Now, at that time, there weren't necessarily the same number of searches and task force working groups. So that that can vary. I recognize that considerably.
Alright, but I'm thinking if we think uh twenty eighteen, what y'all thought about for the. Was city manager has risen. And why not thinking for, because some people may work fifteen hours. I I'd like the ebb and flow thing, but I I just just know that, anyway. That that it can get, some people can work a lot more. I read slower than most of y'all, so it might take me a longer time just reading stuff that I get every day. And that's not talking about what I get from here. I'm talking about what I get from community members. And I'm teasing about reading slow, but I get a lot of messages from community members also that takes time.
Cynthia.
So I just created a little brief spreadsheet. Um, right now, the mayor gets sixty-one, forty-nine. Chief of staff gets one-thirty, uh, council gets thirteen, one forty-one. Annually altogether, that's three hundred and twenty-two, let's say two, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, hundred thousand. The range, if we're looking at between thirty and thirty-seven-five for the mayor. One seventy-five to two hundred for a chief of staff, and fifteen thousand for council. Is three fifty-five, so thirty thousand more. Um, to three eighty-seven-five. So we're not talking that big of a difference if you drop the mayor's salary to between thirty, thirty-seven-five. Um. I'm just, I'm just putting it out there so we can have it in context, um, how much we're really talking about here. Right now, again, between thirty thousand and. Uh, sixty thousand difference.
Robert.
That's very helpful, Cynthia. Thank you. Um, I will, I also just wanted to throw in, um. You know, council members in aggregate will also have, at least in my reading. Uh, somewhat more responsibilities with respect to collective oversight of the city manager, right? The reason we're here today. Um, and so, and then the the last thing I would just note is the the memo that I referenced earlier from Dan. Um, did benchmark uh council at twenty hours a week, not fifteen.
Okay, um, I will. Just once again, um, refer colleagues to the chart. And the responsibilities of the city manager, responsibilities of the mayor going forward. Understanding what. Comments from others that uh perhaps we want a mayor who is uh. More active legislatively in certain realms. Um. However, I I take the point that we want to hire a city manager. Who has the expertise to be the CEO and manager of this organization. Council will work with the city manager, uh, and the city manager will report to to council. But a great deal of the work currently on the mayor's plate will be. In the future, the responsibility. in the future, the responsibility as designed, the responsibility of the city manager. And I would hope that would be reflected in the compensation for both those, uh, offices. So I'm not talking about common council at this point, but city manager and mayor. Hey, I don't know that we have consensus on. Did you have a point, Rob?
Just a, a quick point. I, I think it's been said, but I'll just put my two cents in. I think it, it's going to be very important for us moving forward. For those of us who've been in the budget meetings, having to make decisions about salary at a time when we're struggling over a lot of other decisions about how to spend money. It's very difficult to vote increases to ourselves or the mayor. So I think it's going to be really important for us to have that X factor that's sort of built in. So we've talked about tying it to the living wage. I think that's a smart one. We're going to have to also come up with an X factor around what the average hours are, since we're talking about a hourly wage. That average is going to have to come across each of us individually as well as us collectively, because it has to be one number. So I think we did use fifteen in the past. Dan's calculations at twenty might have been a different, different set of work. But I thought we agreed on fifteen when we made that last choice. Not saying that's the number we have to go with into the future. All I'm saying is it needs to be one number that we agree on, or at least vote in a majority on.
George.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Rob, that we have to pick one number and, and it's a tough decision to make when you're doing the budget as a whole. My recollection, and I may be able to find it, is that we came up with numbers if the average was fifteen, if the average was seventeen, if the average was twenty. I don't, and that was part of the discussion. I don't think we, we decided on a number, really. And, and the fact is, we didn't, we didn't go with that recommendation at the time. We, we, we voted not to raise our salaries that year. So, but I, I agree with what you're saying.
Robert.
Thanks. Um, I would also just remind colleagues, I think almost half of us at the table, um, opted into the pension system where you have to record a rolling average of three hours. We could just, you know, charge council to track their hours for a period of time. And to Rob's point, find some sort of average of that.
And that is exactly what was done in twenty eighteen.
I've actually been doing that this year.
So that's a good suggestion that, uh, you know, for the next few months for council to track. And if you can look back on, uh, most recent months, that would be helpful. And then we can have discussion. Again, we will not be voting on, um, mayor or council compensation tonight and, uh, very possibly not in August. The pressing salary figure to, uh, come to an agreement on, in, uh, by August is city manager. And I certainly understand, and this is why we're having this conversation, that they're all related. We did say that the, um, city manager, mayor would be, uh, neutral, revenue neutral. And I, that was a well thought out plan, looking at roles and responsibilities. Phoebe.
You know, about fifteen hours a week, or fifteen thousand a year, for one. And, um, I have to be pretty honest, I am not that write down every hour minute. That was frustrating for me. That's for me. If others want to do that, fine. I'm, I'm thankful for whatever I get for this job, to be perfectly honest. I chose to do this, so I'm all right with it. I'm all right with whatever they give me, right? Because it's extra, I have a full-time job. But I'm thinking and looking ahead for other women, other people of color, that this might be something that they can do for sort of like their main job. That's what I'm thinking about. I don't know about everybody else, but I'm hoping we see a change of people who are willing to do this type of work because it's beneficial. They can't do it because it, anyway, that, 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 that's my thought. I, I like this. I'm, I'm loving this a lot. I don't know about other, other people, and I'm sure there are other people like me who would want to do this, but it, it's, it won't benefit them, if that makes sense to anybody.
Yeah, that, that makes a lot of sense, uh, Phoebe. And, um, it was challenging in twenty eighteen for us all to keep track of every hour we spend, you know, you're on the phone with people, you're emailing people late at night, you're bumping into people when you're out. Yeah, it's hard. And that's why we were talking about an average. So having a sense of the average amount of time spent, I think, is a very good thing to do. And that also helps us as we're talking about, um, with others who may want to be involved in common council. Your other point about wanting, uh, compensation that attracts a broad and diverse group of residents to see themselves, see themselves as possibly being able to run for, uh, and serve the community by being on council. That was part of our discussion, as I recall, in twenty eighteen, which is what led to the increase. At that time, there was a clear recognition and desire, uh, to, to do that.
Awesome.
Duxon.
I'll just, uh, throw in a little, another aspect of accessibility to people, just my personal experience, is that, um, unlike Jorge, I've tried to actually guard my time better, uh, because it can be all-consuming and it's like, I gotta pay attention to my day job, because if I lose that, I can't afford my house. So I gotta pay attention to my family, because, you know, I have responsibilities, I made a commitment to my wife and, and the people in my life. So I'm actually a little more guarded, uh, over the past eight years with my time. So I, I do, I like your number, Donna, because that's roughly what I try to keep it to. Because, you know, TCAT could have been a whole fifteen hours a week, um, the committees were on, like. So I don't want to make it sound like to the public either that this is this horrible onerous thing. It's the greatest honor of my life to serve on council. And, um, I'm happy to put the time in, but I do have, you know, my own mental health needs and, and family needs and deja vu needs. So that's another aspect of it too, which only makes all the, all the harder to come to a number. But I'll be able to throw that in there.
Good points.
Yeah, well said. Thanks, Doc. Chris.
I just had a clarifying question about, um, just wanted to make sure I understood you. When you said, um, revenue neutral, I think that's the phrase. You, you were talking about adjusting, um, the city manager and the mayor to be equivalent to what now is the Chief of Staff and the mayor. Am I right about that?
That there would not be, uh, any significant cost increase, in fact, that it would be neutral, not, not revenue neutral, but, uh, yeah, I misspoke. So yes, that we would not be looking at, um, additional cost. Keeping in mind, as has been pointed out, there are costs, significant costs to fringe packages. But, uh, yes, the discussions in twenty eighteen have, uh, been that the, um, city manager would be us, a slight increase, not defined, but an increase from the current Chief of Staff. The Chief of Staff position is no longer, uh, at play. And that the mayor would have a reduced compensation because the mayor will not be the CEO of the city. I, I hope that's clear.
And, and I think that the term, Chris, you may have been looking for is budget neutral.
Yes, thank you. That was what was in my head, but not what came out. Uh, George.
The one position we haven't talked about tonight that is not budget neutral is Deputy City Manager for Public Safety.
You're right, George. We have not talked about that. And there are a number of new positions in the city government organization. We have currently a special events, uh, staff member. Uh, that's a new position. You are correct that there will be a Deputy City Manager for Public Safety. We've not talked about that. We've not moved forward with that, uh, at this point. There've been a number of searches and demands. And to, you know, on, on some level, it is arguably the case that we should make some decision and hire someone in city manager position before we're able to hire a deputy to that individual, a deputy city manager. But you're absolutely right. Any other comments, questions, points? Or Ian, anything additional to add that you'd like to add? Sorry?
I'm, I'm good.
I'm sorry.
Shelley looks like she wanted to say something.
Yes, thank you, Shelley.
Sorry, but to that last point about the, uh, and Steve would have to correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought there was a budget created that in, in terms of RPS, that had an additional position. At the time, we were talking about a commissioner. And so.
So your question, Shelley, that is in the budget. The Deputy City Manager is budgeted. It's in the, in there, even though we are not, um, right now, uh, actively searching that. And Steve is shaking his head that yes, that is indeed factored into our budget. Shelley, sorry, I think we lost you. Nope. You're there, okay.
I'm still there. I, I spoke to you a second ago with my mute button on, so I don't know what's going on here.
All right. Thank you, Shelley, and thank you, Ian. Any other comments on this point? Okay, we.
Would, no, one question.
Yes.
Okay, I heard you. You said we needed a city manager before we hired a Deputy City Manager. Yeah, so, yeah, that's clear. Because I'm just thinking, all these positions coming up in twenty twenty-four, like, it's going to be a lot of work with, with, you know, because some parts of the count, we have to be on board. That's what I'm saying. You're talking about the hours. There's going to be a lot of work that we have to do in the future. Um, yeah.
Yes, there is a lot, a number of searches this year, as everyone on council is aware. There will be searches in twenty twenty-four as well. Yes. Okay, um, and I think, as I said a moment ago, the, the top priority is to, uh, have that range, which I believe we have on city manager. Range of one-seventy-five to two-hundred thousand, that does not include fringe. We can be, um, we can get further information. Ian will share some information with us. We do not need to make decisions on mayor's salary and council compensation at this, at this time. Donna.
Did we agree to the one-seventy-five to two-hundred range? I thought we were thinking about it some more. I'm not ready to publicize that.
Okay.
Is that every?
All right, yeah, thank you for that correction. George.
Yeah, if, if anything, I, I don't think we should set the low end of the range that high, you know?
Okay, so, um, Ian will be able to share more data and council can think about it, and we will return, uh, to this in August. Okay. And with all of these, uh, changes, there are then, uh, legislative next steps. So I will turn it over to Ari to, uh, describe some of those next steps. And Ian, if you can stick with us just a bit longer through our agenda item two and possibly three, that would be great.
No problem.
Thank you, Laura. Um, right, so in terms of legislative next steps, it's worth keeping in mind a few points around the salary conversation we've just been having. The first is that city manager salary can be established by resolution. So council can, um, deliberate on that, um, as you see fit. And, uh, I, I believe the mayor is suggesting that, um, a further conversation around it would be on the August second council agenda. So, uh, presumably that is the sort of legislative path that piece will take. In contrast, mayor and council salaries are established in chapter one oh seven of the city code. Um, under the doctrine of legislative equivalency, um, we're required to set those by local law, not by resolution or ordinance. And a local law has an aging requirement. That means that, uh, you, um, can only, roughly speaking, what it means is that we, uh, we have to know what numbers you want for mayor and council salaries about ten days before, well, more than ten days before, call it two weeks before. Uh, council will take its final vote on those numbers. That said, um, if council would like to discuss those numbers and reach a conclusion on them at the August second council, um, meeting, uh, that could be a productive path forward, if you'd like. And then we would prepare a local law based on what you determined at the August second meeting and bring it back to a subsequent meeting after laying it on the table and letting it age properly for a final binding vote. So in somewhat plain English, at August, the August second council meeting, mayor and council salaries could be, um, procedurally, uh, you could have a procedural vote on mayor and council salaries that tells us what you want to do with them, but it wouldn't be the final binding legal vote. That's those pieces. Um, the deliberations, right? I, I explained that any changes to, um, salary, uh, during the term, um, would have referendum implications. And it seems clear that, uh, I'm sorry, mayor and council salaries, that is. Um, and it seems clear that everything you're considering regarding mayor and council salaries would all be effective January one of next year. So not during the elected term of that office. In order to hit those deadlines, um, there is a legal process for getting a local law like that filed, follow, uh, filed, that we need to leave time for after it's passed. So we're you to pass the local, take the final legally binding vote at, say, September council, even October council, that will be fine. You definitely don't want to do it at like December council. That will be too late to have it be effective. So I just wanted to put, um, that out there, um, as well. And, um, in just a moment, I'll get to your questions, Cynthia. Um, and lastly, um, to the extent that council, as we discussed earlier, wants to come up with a rule of thumb, so to speak, for future increases that would then be effectuated or not, as council sees fit in the budget process, that is perfectly fine from a legal perspective. Were council to explore attempting to lock in? That has other issues that we would need to explore, but it doesn't sound like you're going there, so that's great. Um, I, I see you had a question.
If I understand correctly, if we do something midterm, it must go through referendum?
If you were to take a vote now to change, to increase your salaries, or, or decrease, actually, but to change your salaries now, um, effective prior to this coming January one, yes, that has referendum implications. Because.
Midterm, because we did it in twenty twenty-two, according to this report. And obviously, that was midterm for some of us. So the only time it all comes up at once is once a decade.
Yeah.
So basically, what you're saying is that you can only change the salary once a decade?
No, no, that's not.
Because otherwise, it's always going to be midterm for half of council.
So for reductions, what I said is true. So for reductions, what I said is true. Um, for increases. Um, a midterm increase can. Have implications under some circumstances, but they were not triggered by the twenty twenty two situation.
Because otherwise.
Yeah.
The the only time it was would not be midterm is once a decade. Otherwise, always half of council is always going to be midterm.
That's true, except for once a decade. That's right. Yes.
We did it as part of the budget in twenty twenty two. We didn't. And we did.
Well, and there was a local law as well.
We didn't do referendum.
No, no, no referendum. That's right. Yeah.
Um. Said for midterm changes. Okay.
So. Yeah, um.
Maybe.
The permiss for increases um. In the case of a city, um. Uh, increases the salary of an elective officer during his term of office, um. Uh, except for any such, uh, yeah. Yeah, I what we did in twenty twenty two was legitimate, so that's.
So it's only a reduction that needs to go to referendum. Okay.
Yep.
So if there is a reduction to the mayor's salary, we are too late for referendum from this year.
I'm sorry, if there, no, no, no. N- no, next year won't start till January one. Any any final action taken in twenty twenty three?
Midterm, gotcha. Okay.
Right. Yeah, it's not that the vote is midterm in your, in the middle of your term now, it's that. The effective date of the salary change can't be during the current term of office.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Sorry, I got all. Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this is. Well, why don't we move on then to to A?
You know, I apologize.
Agenda.
I apologize. Can I actually clarify my last comment just a little bit?
Sure.
Um, the answer, um, which I um I'm rather confident, um, in fact, I'm quite confident, um, we abided in twenty twenty two as well. Is that increases during a term of office, like the twenty twenty two increase as it applied to five out of the ten council members at the time, presumably. Um, because half of council would not have been ending their term. Do have referendum implications. It's not just reductions. What I said initially is true. But the referendum implications, uh, referenda are not just a binary, yes, you hold one or no, you don't. That's municipal home rule law, section twenty three. It is called a mandatory referendum. That's what, for example, the city manager referendum was. That was a mandatory referendum that had to go to referendum. Municipal home rule law, section twenty four, addresses what are called permissive referendum. And a permissive referendum requirement is one where the local law has to um. Give the public the opportunity to collect enough signatures to call a referendum. And I strongly suspect that that is what we did um in for the twenty twenty two increase. Um. Uh, because it would have been midterm and the referendum wasn't called that. There was, in fact, I I now recall, there was a forty five day waiting period. Um, during which you have to wait for any um signatures that may be filed, additions that may be filed. Um, and the city did wait out that that waiting period so that uh if the public had called a referendum, then it would have been subject to it. That's the answer.
Just point of clarification always also requires a public hearing, correct?
All local laws require a public hearing.
Right, gotcha. I only know this because this is what we do with everything having to do with the SJC and the town of Ithaca and the town of Dryden. Every, every bond issuance goes through. Permission, permissive referendum. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you for the question and the the clarification. We all set to move on now to agenda item two A. Which is the local law that is in the packet. This is a local law entitled Amendment of City Charter and Code. To specify the duties, authority, and appointment and removal procedures of the city manager. And once again, I'll turn it over to Ari for any comments. However, the uh. Full document is in the packet and this uh. Was sent out. Once again, I apologize that attachments were not sent out sooner. Uh, but this was sent out to everyone on Monday. So Ari, can I turn this over to you then, please?
Uh, sure. Thank you, Laura. Um, so right, uh, the local law by and large speaks for itself, but um as some background. Um, it's worth recalling a few facts. One is that um. There was obviously a very large package of legislation, um, with a lot of detail in it that common council passed in the form of both a local law and an ordinance. Back in twenty twenty one, um, that local law from twenty twenty one was then approved at referendum. In uh fall twenty twenty two last year, um, and will take effect January first of twenty twenty four. That addresses. Um. With respect to the city manager's um job responsibilities and the way that they will um be hired and and supervised and so on. That twenty twenty one local law was kind of the thirty thousand foot view is the really big picture of what will the city manager do? There was also a very granular local law with respect to changes to the mayor's authority because. Uh, changes to the mayor's authority had to be um taken step by step through um the hundreds of references to the mayor um in the um. City charter and the city code. But with respect to the city manager, it was a bigger picture view of um what we were establishing for the city manager. Um, that brings us forward to tonight where you have in front of you a an additional local law. Um, not to be confused with the twenty twenty one local law that was then approved at referendum. Um, and this local law is now taking a more detailed view um and and giving council an opportunity to. Um, take a more detailed um to to give more detailed instruction on uh what the city manager's um. Job will look like and what their responsibilities will be. Um, obviously, that in turn should be taken in context with a few other documents. One is the job description, which HR has. Um, put forward. Um. Another is the um uh template employment agreement. Um, that is included as the next agenda item in your um agenda tonight. Um, uh, and that template agreement, um, I think probably offers the most granular um view in many respects um of the. Uh, city uh managers on proposed um sort of terms, terms of employment. Um. Uh. So that's that's sort of the um threshold description that I wanted to offer here. Um. The other. Much more minor point worth making is that um. There is one uh minor. Change um that I would recommend, which is uh that in um section C twelve A one. Which is on the second page of the local law. Um, there's a reference to um establishing residency in the county within four months of appointment. And the um. Uh, I I would uh recommend that we um. Uh, make, uh, we I we've identified that that is not consistent with. Um, the template employment agreement that's also in your agenda packet tonight. And then so in order to make that consistent. Um, I I would recommend that it um refer to no more than twelve months of appointment or such lesser period of time as specified by the common council from time to time. Um, if you use that language, it will per, it will um be in sync with the employment that with the template employment agreement in your packet. Because the template employment agreement refers to the county manager, to the city manager, being required to establish county residency. Um, within six months um of appointment and providing um common council with the ability to extend, if it so chooses in its discretion. That six month window up to as much as twelve months, which is why the twelve month number could make sense um in the um charter provision.
Thank you, Ari. Comments? Questions? I know there was one question raised. Uh, and uh, there's been some email exchange, but. Other comments? Questions? Jorge?
Sorry, um, thank you so much, uh, Ari and and company who worked on this um. Uh, on this documentation. Um, I really appreciate all the hard work that went into it. Um, I will note, though, that on a personal level, I don't entirely feel comfortable. Um, prepared to vote on this today, um, given the time constraints with this uh agenda going out Monday evening. Um, I frankly have not had enough time to sit with this and 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 parse through my thoughts and 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 feelings on. On how comfortable I am with some of the things being proposed here and to make an an educated, you know, uh, decision right now. I'm. I would, there are some things here that I would love to engage in conversation and discussion on right now, but I personally don't feel comfortable. Um, with the amount of time I've had to sit with this to to vote on this um uh tonight. Um, there are a couple of things that I want to, I I I won't say everything now because I want opportunity for discussion to flow, but there are some things that I. I have concerns about within here, but just personally speaking, I have not had chance to go through this entire. Um, uh, uh amendment and 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 vote on um feel comfortable to placing a vote that I feel is informed. Um, that's on my, that's, I'm just speaking honestly here and I don't, I don't mean to shut down things or delay us, but I personally don't feel like I've had enough time. Uh, to work with this and I'm not trying to make this as a judgment on anybody. Who has worked on this, being like, you should have gotten this to us earlier or whatnot. Like I said, I'm ready to have this conversation and I appreciate all the work that went into it, but. I don't feel comfortable making. A concrete decision on this right now.
Okay, are there, y- you referenced there are a few points that you have questions about. What are they?
I mean, for instance, um, there, I would like some more clarity on, for instance, sections uh two B and two G for two B. Uh, mentioned that uh um the city manager may participate in a discussion, make recommendations, but shall not have a right to vote. Um. That is very open to, I'm I'm curious to see how that would, you know. Actually take shape when we're in council, the city manager is allowed to sit essentially as member of council, just not with uh the ability to, you know, to vote, but to sort of participate in discussion and debate. Um, I don't know what the restrictions or limitations on or how that would impact how conversation is going, for instance. And I can go through uh a a couple of others, but I don't want to hog up all the time. And so I'll just wait to hear other folks' feedback, but. Those are just some, and another point that I have con- concerns around is the the last section, section E for non-interference. Um, I have a lot of concerns around that and my council's ability to communicate with staff independent. Of the city manager, um, and the implications associated there. But again, I don't want to hog up all the time or or dominate the conversation. And so I'll I'll stop there, but just say that I personally want to have this discussion and am prepared to do so, but I don't feel comfortable personally casting a vote today.
And uh, thank you. Um, if I can, I just with respect to the procedural point about um taking a vote, I just want to remind all of us that this is a committee of the whole, so. Any votes that are taken tonight are not the final winding vote of the common council on anything. Doesn't mean that you should feel any more comfortable. That's up to you. Um, but um, but I do want to be clear that nobody is proposing, nor would it even be legally possible. That any vote taken tonight would be the final vote on any of these documents.
Thank you.
This is a committee level meeting. It happens to be a committee of the whole, which means all of common council is here. But this is the equivalent in some sense of like the city administration committee, um deliberating on something and then sending it on to the full common council if it so chooses.
Sure. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you. Um, I I. Will, as we're having discussion, I'll defer to others who have questions or comments. I will point out, um, just in response to. One of the items you mentioned, uh, to be. Um, well, two is the city manager shall have the following duties and authority. B is to attend all meetings of the common council. As um. The city manager may participate in any discussion and make recommendations, but shall not have the right to vote. I will point out that uh staff, certainly department heads. Present and participate and and inform, in fact, members of common council. Um, and we did have an example of that just this month. Um, when we had discussion around zoning. So we. Look to the staff who have expertise. In their area of responsibility and that helps to inform council in the votes that council takes. Staff do not. Have those votes.
And I completely, for clarification, I completely agree with that and I would not want to obstruct or hinder that in any way, but what I will say is typically in those scenarios. Um, this is. Agenda or item specific and usually at the behest of. An elected official, whether it be the mayor or an older person of this council, and I believe that that's really important. In terms of agenda setting for the legislative body, and I would not want to see that. Uh, disrupted in any way. But again, I completely agree with you that we should not prevent. And that's why I have issue with non-interference, but that's why we should, we should not prevent uh having uh staff come to these meetings to have a dialogue. Uh, with us and provide necessary and important and essential context for legislation or action we would would be taking on. I believe that should be attached to an elected official, whether it be the mayor or a member of council um for the city manager to participate, but that's just me personally. Um. And that's just where my concerns coming from.
Thank you. Uh, Robert, did I see your hand?
So I'm gonna move us from that a little bit because I do have a question about um. In the uh. Section A, number one, so the first point in the last sentence, second half of that. I was just curious where uh whether or not this aligns with either um. You know, best practice, other, the way the other municipalities write their code or or write these uh or whether. Um, this is just kind of being boiler plated from somewhere else. Um, so I'm just curious about the um. Says no member of common council or mayor shall be appointed city manager during the term for which that person was elected. Or within two years after expiration of that person's term? Is that just a standard practice? I'm I'm maybe looking at Ian, he might be able to answer that as well, but uh Ari could answer it, I guess, or.
I can speak to it and um I I probably useful to hear from both of us. I mean, I I can tell you that um in uh our work in my office, I'm preparing. The template employment agreement that's in this agenda packet, um, we looked to many other cities uh employment agreements for a city manager. Uh, and uh, this was a provision that we found in some of those um that. Uh, obviously, the particular ti- and and we found some that had this particular time period in them as well. Um, but obviously, the time period is a. Um, is a, you know, a choice that would need to be made if if that provision is going to be there, but um but that um was a practice that was in a number of them. Um, that's helpful. Yeah.
And just as a reminder, um. The. City manager, the position we're discussing, uh, that individual would only be um. Taking office in January of twenty twenty four. Just in terms of our timing, I wanted to. Re- repeat that, which has been said already, so thanks.
I I have other questions, but I'll save those for later and let others jump in.
Robert, did you have a?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, I guess. I'm gonna take us to a different section because the the. I know I emailed about one provision, but I think the biggest thing I have a issue with is in section C under removal. I strongly oppose. The requirement of a super majority of council to dismiss the city manager. Uh, it does not make sense to me that we would have someone who does not have the support of the majority of the members of council. And could not be removed from office. So I would strongly recommend we say if uh a majority vote rather than a two thirds vote there.
Or is that from six to so from seven to six?
Uh, it is, it is from, yeah, it is from seven to six, I believe, yes.
So eleven, the majority of eleven.
Seven. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Yes, it's six. It's the, right. But it requires seven right now as proposed.
And I'll likewise note, and I'm trying to pull it up here, um, that again, we looked at other um cities as precedents on this. Um, and they range from. Uh, there was a pretty broad range is my recollection. Um, I think there are, uh, it was, it was common for a super majority to be required. Um, and. Uh, common for a super majority to be required. And again, I'd be interested to, I'm here Ian's take on this as well. I'm gonna um work on. I'm pulling that um part up. Um, and um. Uh, some was a, some required a majority plus one, some required, uh, I want to tell you two thirds. Um, I think there was one out there that may have required unanimous vote, um, which strikes me as very odd. Um, so uh. Yeah, that that that's where this came from.
Ian, do you have any um experience uh to share with us on this point?
Yeah, I would say sort of to to piggyback on what Ari said, um, it is a, I I wouldn't say there is a um. One shining uh. Yeah, common one. I think it is a little bit of a mixed bag with that particular provision. Um. So uh, it it's certainly up to council. Uh, I've seen majority. Um, Ari said he's seen uh unanimous and and super majority, so it really is one of, one of those three things, quite honestly, and there's not really uh. Um. One, I, in my. One I, in my experience, that pops up as a, most of them have this.
Sorry Ian, most of them have a super majority requirement?
No, no, sorry, I, nothing comes to mind, top of mind for me that, that, that screams, most of them have any.
Oh, oh, got it, yeah.
Yeah, that's one of those things, but yeah.
Oh, thank you, and I'll just add um, to, to bolster what I was saying a moment ago, some examples, um, the city of Newburgh, as I understand it, is a majority plus one requirement. The city of Canandaigua, I believe, is a two thirds requirement, and I believe the city of Auburn Um, is the strange five out of five requirement. And I believe, um, though, I, I believe all of those applied to removal as well as appointment. But I would want to double check that fact, um, so I know some of them applied to, to um, removal, and I think all of those did, I'm not positive on that.
So, so just for clarity, are we talking about ten members of council or the eleven voting members?
Oh, let's, so the, the voting.
Not seven? Yeah, okay, I just want to make sure we're clear on that. I mean, I've sometimes only been here in point three mode, but Usually have to count whole numbers, that happens often at like eleven thirty.
George.
The way Rob can tell, I'll put it, uh, carries weight with me, if A majority of councils Wanted to get rid of the city manager. That should stand, so I, I think we should change this to a simple majority.
And perhaps it's also just worth my providing my understanding of um, some of the rationale that some of those other cities um, in our reviews Um, had for the super majority requirement, um, and my understanding is that uh, there, uh, they were looking to Um, ensure adequate stability of the administration of the city. Um, if you have a simple majority appoint, fair enough. Um, and then one, what if it were only a simple majority, a bare, a bare minimum of a majority that appoints the city manager? And then one of those votes changes, you could have um, a pretty quick turnaround. I, I certainly hope none of this would be applicable to the ethic, obviously, you got a pretty quick turnaround um, in the administration of the city, if you provide a little more stability In terms of a super majority requirement, um, it can provide more stability to the administration of the city.
George.
I, I can understand that, um. Majority plus one would be seven, yes?
It would, yeah, that's right, seven versus eight, which is the two thirds that goes written in there, yeah.
I, I still favor a simple majority, but if other people are uncomfortable with that. I think majority plus one is a lot better than eight.
Other views, is this something that's Significant issue for others, Tuckson?
Yeah, Ari's kind of devil's advocate was what I was thinking that. Not that we're, I have historically been very capricious body, but um I see the arguments, I could, I could go around defending each of the, the various proposals, but I think I lean towards majority plus one.
Yeah, the role of the city manager, the professional city manager to provide stability and security and Predictability in the administration and the operation of the city, it's not, it should not be subject to the um Political changes in, in common council. Um, so a, a city manager should only be terminated if, if he or she is Is rationally believed to be grossly incompetent in the role. So I, I really worry that with a simple majority, without a majority plus one or even a super majority. It wouldn't provide um, the kind of stability and security that we need, and I, I wonder if we would Attract the really best candidates if um If they saw how easy it might be to be terminated, that's what worries me.
Before I turn to Jorge, um, Ian, do you have uh, any response to Donna's comment?
I mean, certainly you have provisions in here, um, that Ari has not yet spoken to that uh, deal with The termination up to that point, so I mean, it, it's, you know, as far as the cause and things of that nature, so I mean, it would have to be Process oriented, right, um, but if somebody is Um, looking at that and they see a, a simple majority versus a majority plus one or a Super majority, obviously they would feel that they would be a touch more, I guess, protected from the, the winds of politics that would Potentially swing one way versus one vote, so to answer Donna's question, I, I would say yes.
Jorge, thank you, Ian.
I, I don't believe I was next, I think I, I thought I saw a couple of, of hands, I don't know, did you have your hand up, Miss V B, or did I, did I misremember that?
I, I'm kind of with Jorge and wanted a little more time, but I know we don't have time Because it did come out a little late, so, but I I'm going to just keep listening.
No, I, I appreciate the idea that We're, we're hoping to acquire more stability with a city manager, however, I do believe that the other idea that we were hoping to accomplish with a city manager was to create greater Oversight and agency for the common council over the uh, administration of, of, of the city and to be able to focus on Um, more legislative pri- priorities as a common council And to do more constituent outreach, and I find it very hard to believe the common council would be able to accomplish these things If a majority of common council did not feel that they could adequately work with uh, the current city manager. I, I would imagine that we will be bogged down in a lot of debates and, and frustrations, um, if we weren't on the same page. And so by that simple logic, I believe that we should um That we should stick to a simple majority, uh, in the, in the issue of removal of the city manager.
Robert?
Um, yeah, just to address Donna's point specifically, I mean, I think Per the rest of what is drafted here before us, we, we still must provide as a body the justification for the termination of The individual, um, I am not I, I don't, I would be, I don't think, I'm not as concerned about Things swinging one way or another, I mean, I think it's more the collective action problem of trying to get a super majority of people to support Uh, the removal of an individual who may be derelict in their duty Is a very, very steep burden in the positive removal sense, and so I, I remain Firmly in support of a majority vote.
So I, I guess I do need to clarify, um, a few of you have referred to the idea that The city manager could only be removed for dereliction of duty, it is true that their Um, uh, job uh, is to professionally, and Ian can speak to this better than me, can professionally deliver Um, services and administration in the operation of city government in an apolitical manner, um, but uh In the end, it's not like there's a um, uh, this is not the equivalent of a disciplinary hearing, when and if council Chooses to terminate the city manager, where they have to put on a case to show that the city manager Didn't uh, do a good job, there are four cause, if you, when we get to the template employment agreement in your agenda packet, there are four cause Basies for termination, there's also in that template employment agreement, just to be, you know, upfront about it, given that we are discussing it here. Um, uh, there's a category called discretionary removal, um, and um What you all are discussing, um, and then the hypothetical that we've been discussing, the idea that um, a majority of council might Lose faith in the city manager, that doesn't necessarily um, equate to having Um, shown that the city manager did some particular thing that violated the terms of their employment. Um, so I, I do want to be clear that dereliction of duty is um, not the only basis uh, for the city manager to be Um, terminated, and Ian can speak much better than me to, sort of how that works generally with city manager models across other cities, but um But I, but I, but I know that it's uh, common, as I understand it, for um Uh, legislative body to retain the right to change city managers when they no longer Have the confidence, as a few of you have said, in a particular city manager.
Ian, did you want to comment on that?
Um, no, I, I, I think Ari, Ari spoke to it, I think that's fine.
All right, Jorge.
I'll just further add that, um, while the referendum was underway uh, for the city manager, I encountered a lot of folks who had cautions and apprehensions And expressed to me that they were not in support of the referendum, because they were concerned, and even had folks who were in support, but had shared these, you know, concerns That a lot of, a lot of the democratic engagement with Sit with the city and the common council would be hamstrung, um, if The um, if we moved to a city manager model and we would not be able to elect the chief executive of the city. And I think of, a, a, a well-founded sort of counter to that was that we would, common council would remain, would retain control Over um, uh, the hiring and removal of this person and, 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 and be sure to oversight and manage them. As, as they un- under, underway, go underway with their duties to the best of our ability, and so that's And so for that reason, and that concern for democratic processes and engagement and Not wanting to stretch out the distance between the public And the executive of the city, I believe it's really important that we stick closer to a simple majority, because it's going to be a lot more difficult if we feel Um, the need to remove this person, um, if we do not, you know, adhere to that.
Thank you, uh, I will just add that a few of you have commented that you would like more time to read carefully and digest this, and it is Completely my fault for not getting this uh, material out sooner. Partially in response to Jorge's last point, uh, one of the things that uh, will be important Is uh Performance reviews of the city manager, so City manager will be hired, there will be um Goals established by the city manager, uh, performance goals that will be presented to council, council Will have opportunity to comment on those performance goals, and then council will have the responsibility To uh, meet with the city manager for performance feedback on uh At least once a year and with a performance evaluation uh, each year. So there will be a number of steps whereby council has responsibility To uh, work with the city manager on achievement of goals, stated goals. Cynthia.
Thank you for highlighting that, I really appreciated the inclusion of that in this uh, contract, I thought it was a, a brilliant Aspect to constantly have or continuously and annually have a dialogue between council and the city manager to Uh, review how things are proceeding, um, look at long-term vision as well as uh, short-term implementation, um, so I, I appreciate you reminding us of that, and I do think that that brings in That constant oversight and um, and accountability by the city manager to council. My inclination is to support a majority plus one, which I guess would be seven. Um, I do think back to times where a super majority is required of us, for example, anytime the, the city passes An ordinance that is subject to the count, uh, comment of the county, I'm looking to Ari, for example, that makes a, a comment about a zoning Uh, law or other ordinance.
Yeah, T M L two thirty nine.
We are required to, any uh, decision, um, is required to pass by a super majority if we go against The recommendation of the county, um, so I think that, that two thirds or super majority vote, um, I would like to think that the Termination of a city manager is at least the same threshold as um, as what we are subject to by the county in this case. So if, if you're just taking notes of, of where people are thinking about that, I am in support of majority plus one. I do have some other comments uh, about the document, so I'm very grateful that we have more time to review this. Um, some of the comments are really minor, um, I'll start from two A.
And Cynthia, before you do, can I just briefly wa- uh, add something to what you just said?
Yes, please.
Um, which is on the, um, I, I just want to make sure, um, I understand, uh Whether you're expressing favor for majority plus one or two thirds, majority plus one being seven Two thirds being eight, because you have to round up, um, and I'll note that my tentative understanding is that Of municipalities that require more than a majority for removal of the city manager, two thirds is more common than majority plus one, not that that Is an answer one way or another, it's just information.
Thank you, I, I mean, my gut actually goes with two thirds, but I'm not hearing Um, support from my colleagues, um, so in which case, um, having heard From two of my colleagues who are support majority plus one, Donna supports two thirds. I'm flexible, I would, my gut would say two thirds, but if majority plus one is what Might allow us to have broader support of council, I would support that.
Robert?
Um, if we're gonna have more time, we could invite council persons from like Long Beach, Corning, Elmira, to like, get on a call with us and share what their experience has been around something like this.
I think I, I
Or absent that, sorry, I'm sorry, absent that, we could just take a look at the data and see what the distribution is.
Yeah, I, I think Right now I'm looking at this contract as what is the environment that's going to invite The quality and caliber of city manager that we're looking for. Um, I think professionals look for stability, they look for uh, continuity. They look for um You know, if you're relocating your family in your home to a new city and state, you want to have an environment where Perhaps you might not be so subject to political whims, and I think as a, a majority, a simple majority Does not provide that kind of stability. Um, and so going for majority plus one or two thirds gives an indication that There has to be like incredibly strong commitment to remove someone in order to remove someone, so that's why I'm looking at it more from a, how do you create a, an attractive position versus Experiences of other councils, and, and, you know, that's not everybody's position.
So um, just before turning to George, Cynthia, you've said that you have a, a few edits, some of them may be minor. Um, I know that others have said you do want time to, to look at this, and Additional time to look at this, so I just want to point out that we are not taking a vote tonight. Um, this is like a committee, and we will be looking at it August second, when people will have had More time to uh, read through this more carefully. So I don't, do you want to save some of your minor edits for that later date, or do you want to identify a few of those?
I'll just flag one or two that I think maybe not be minor, and then if we could get this as a word document, I could redline it, and that might be easier. Um, because if I try to cut and paste it PDF, it's kind of a messy. The, the one that just sort of jumped out at me, that I thought was very interesting, I want to know more about, is two E. Which states, uh, the city manager shall have the duty and authority to prescribe The duties and fix the compensation of all officers appointed by the city manager And of all employees of the city not otherwise provided for by this chapter. So currently Thank you.
Where, where are we?
Uh, two E, it's on page three. Um, so currently, the compensation, I believe, for department heads is approved by council. Uh, I believe we have a managerial unit, um, or I forget the name, but it's approved by council, this Seems to imply that that council approval is not there except for perhaps through the budget. Um, so I wanted clarity on this, because this seems a diversion from our current practice, and I'd like to know more about what is being proposed here, I know council has obviously the power to approve the budget. And if they disagree with the city managers Hiring somebody and just setting a salary without prior, without council approval, we have the ability to change it, but this clause I'd like to look at again and understand exactly is is this saying that council does not have the power to approve compensation of department heads?
So that's certainly not the intent. A good question and certainly not the intent if if you know, we'll look at this language some more and see if we in my office or HR or Ian or or council ultimately feels that a different language would be different language would be appropriate. What we are getting at in this clause is to is the idea that within budgetary authorizations. So so I'll I'll give you an example right now when the city makes certain external hires right now within budgetary authorization, the mayor currently can exercise discretion over the salary step that an external hire is assigned to. I believe this clause would vest similar authority in the city manager for that kind of circumstance. But that's within the budgetary authorizations and salary ranges established by the common council is not letting the city manager go out and write some new budget because they felt like it for for a given position.
Yeah, and I I saw Shelley shaking her head and then raise her hand. So Shelley, would you like to comment on this?
No, actually, Ari just said what I was going to add. The the compensation plan will continue to be set by common council. So it either way I interpreted that was just as we do now, we have the plan. And the mayor currently has the authority to within that plan bring someone in at any step.
Again, if there are concerns on the particular language there, we can absolutely fine tune it.
Okay, and and I think what's hard is, you know, I'm going back and forth between the twenty twenty one local law we drafted and trying to marry all of this together. So I'm I'm going between pages. So, you know, wanting to make sure that we still have the same department head hiring process as before, we're not seeking, we're not seeing like a dramatic adjustment to our hiring processes. What this is clearly just saying that in lieu of the previous mayor's position, as you mentioned, having the ability to adjust and negotiate within the preapproved not only compensation package, but aforementioned hiring process for department heads.
I think that's
Department head hiring department head hiring recommendations would continue to come to council.
But would come, of course, from the city manager rather than the mayor.
Right, right. So that just as now, when there is a recommendation for a department head hiring, the example that comes to mind most readily is there was a recommendation from the mayor, and this is based on the search team, of course. Search team makes a recommendation to the mayor, the mayor made the recommendation to hire Lisa Nicholas as the department head for planning and development. That comes to common council for a decision. That's brought it's a recommendation from the mayor. In the future model, it would be a recommendation coming from the city manager.
And and I my recollection and understanding is that E, that language in E that you two E that you're referring to Cynthia, is the language currently in the charter as applicable to the to with the current mayor under our current model. So the kinds of concerns you're expressing, I I understand. And I guess my answer would be look at the way it works currently with the mayor in terms of prescribing duties and compensation for employees that report to the mayor. And this this would be the same idea, just with the city manager and in the mayor's place.
Yeah, and now that you mention that, I I see that in the twenty twenty one document as a red line item. So thank you for that clarification. Then my my other discussion item, which I believe Jorge mentioned at the very beginning, which I would like to learn more about is the clause of non interference. I think that deserves some understanding of what the intent is or how this would function. I do see that again, going back to the twenty twenty one changes that it is the power of council to identify either to the mayor or city manager any behaviors by a department head or other employee that might warrant. I don't want to say investigation correction or or notification. So anyway, I I think I'd like to know more about this clause, its intent and how it would function. Because if there are concerns, what how that communication should be detailed could be outlined more directly so that we can understand this better.
Regarding non interference you're talking about.
Robert, you have a point on this.
Specifically, yeah, just and just to add to Cynthia's question of of other cities in New York that have a similar provision would be good to know.
Yes, we definitely did not come up with this idea out of whole cloth. It has precedent and I will work on taking up those precedents. And if Ian has comment on that, I expect that would also be helpful.
Yeah, I would I would say the same thing, but also, yeah, the the purpose is to sort of get to the the roles and the delineation, particularly of the role of the city manager versus the subordinates. I mean, I guess you could say the worst case scenario, it's it's attempting to mitigate or address is sort of the end around or the the direct direction from council to some subordinates of the city manager or something of that nature. Again, purpose and intent is genuine. Like Ari said, I think we we could take a look at maybe some of the practices and some of the other wording around this subject. But that that is the intent of this in a model employment agreement is to sort of mitigate that kind of potential worst case scenario.
Donna and then Robert. I'm sorry, before I turn to you, are you commenting on points that Cynthia has raised because I saw that George had his hand up and I don't want to skip over George if he's going to a different section or a different comment. The non interference, okay.
It makes sense to me. And and you can't always encode for common sense and good faith and good communications. I certainly think that if an older person noticed bizarre incompetent behavior on the part of a staff member, a good, you know, would handle a conversation discreetly with the mayor who would then talk to the city manager. What you don't want is an alter person ordering staff around or or bribing department heads to hire their nephew or something like that. So I I think the intent of this makes perfect sense. The communication channel has to be from the older persons to the mayor, to the city manager. And yes, ideally, everybody should have a good relationship and be able to talk to the city manager comfortably as well. But when it comes to personnel, to managing personnel, it should be clear what the lines of communication are.
And and I did just look back at my notes and found that that non interference provision, we drew on the city of New Rochelle's city manager terms for for that, so that the city of New Rochelle uses a clause of that sort.
He's making the big bucks though.
George, did you have a point related to this topic or another one?
Both.
Go ahead.
Okay. In relation to the non interference clause, I I absolutely agree that members of council should not be directing anybody on staff. Period. But my concern is twofold. One, I want to have or members of council should have access to staff to be able to ask some questions and just talk to them. Steve Thayer has a big bowl of candy in his office. I kind of like going in there once in a while. And also, I don't think it's reasonable to expect the city manager to be the go between in every situation. I mean, that that would be impossible. So maybe the language needs to be better on this one.
And to the language point, you just referred to the importance of being able to ask staff questions. And so so the legalese that's in the non interference clause to that point is it says, except for the purpose of inquiry. So that's that's asking questions, right? It is saying that council members can talk to staff to ask questions.
Okay. So shall I finish my stuff or?
Sure, go ahead, George.
Okay. I have two minor suggestions. They have to do with language. In two A and the second whereas where it says the voters of the city overwhelmingly approved. I don't think we need the word overwhelmingly, we just they just approved it. And in number two on page three F where it says to exercise constant supervision over the conduct of all subordinate officers. I'm thinking all we need to say is to exercise supervision. So somebody doesn't have to do it constantly.
Hey, thank you.
And yeah, and I guess that's it. That's all I got.
Okay. Sure, Cynthia and then Robert.
So I'll just say that recently members of council have made appeals to the mayor about individuals that we had hoped to be selected for as a department head. We made appeals directly publicly stated publicly that of who we wanted appointment as as chief of police. So this is saying that no council should request the appointment of a person to be employed by the city manager, right? The city manager appoints the chief, you know, of police. And it's saying here that council should not make a request to the city manager of who we think should be a department head. And so why are we going back to the question of you know, having that dialogue with the city manager, making sure that we as council members maintain our voice through this switch and process? You know, this seems to say that no, it's not the jurisdiction of the council or its committees or members. Again, it says direct, but I'm not talking about direct, but or request the appointment of any person to or their removal from office or employment by the city manager or this or any of the city manager's subordinates. So I just feel that one of the significant things that we do, this is just saying that our our job is to stamp the appointment of the city manager. And I I think that it needs to be more expensive than this. So I just am raising caution about how this is worded, and I don't know if this is exclusively our intent. This is non interference. I'm going back to my previous topic before it gets taken off to another topic.
And Cynthia, you seem to be distinguishing between, I think implicitly distinguishing between appointments that are subject to council approval. And I want to be clear, this clause is obviously does not and cannot diminish councils' right to vote to approve, for example, department head appointments. That's written right into the code. Council would still have a vote on whether any given department head were confirmed or not. So but you seem to be implicitly distinguishing between appointments that the city manager might bring forward or make that are subject to council approval and ones that are not. Is that fair way to interpret?
Their case, whether they're subject to council approval or not. I do think that we and console have exercised what we felt was our voice to, in this case, request. We're not demanding, we're not directing, we're requesting, but this is saying council shall not request the appointments.
So you have concerns with it even with respect to positions that are not subject to council.
Because this is saying that we we should by code remain silent on our intention. So if I were publicly to say I'm requesting the city manager appoint this person, I am now violating this code because I'm making a request. Right? And I I don't think that the that council should by its own code silence itself in a request that it's making with regards to the appointment of a department head or any of the department manager's subordinates. Like, you know, deputy chief of staff or no deputy city manager, right? So I I think this is too restrictive. I understand that we're not looking for interference. But I I think it needs to maintain the voice as representatives of of the city or of our constituents to be able to be able to bring that voice forward in the administration of our different departments and the services that we provide.
Thank you. Yeah, also on the non interference point, Cynthia, I think you raised really good points, so thank you for for doing that. I am questioning whether or not this is the most like if the charter is the most appropriate place for this. Because when we had our last committee of the whole meeting, when we were talking about rules of procedure, sorry, two two meetings ago, about rules of procedure, I think we were gesturing towards modeling after what the Tompkins County Legislature does with respect to one of which you explicitly covered, Ari, the routine requests for information. One sort of non routine that require minimal amounts of work. And then the the special thing that requires coordination with the the city manager. And I just want to make sure I guess in two parts, one, would this now prohibit us from being able to engage in like routiny routinized activity along that line? And then secondly, is again, I'm I'm remembering from my my council orientation, Ari, you always told us, try to, if you're going to pass legislation, try to do it at the lowest level possible in the event that it needs to be changed or whatever. And so want to second Cynthia's point, ask that question and then also ask like, is is the charter the most appropriate place for this language to be included?
Sure, no, thank you. To Cynthia's point that you're also seconding, it's definitely a policy choice. Council needs to decide what it wants to do with it. I don't I don't think there's an automatic answer and there is nuance there to to the points discussed. To the question of how this provision in the charter would relate to rules of procedure elements that you were just referring to that might also address similar matters. There's no doubt that the charter would trump any rules of procedure issues to your point. And that council would want to make a comprehensive set of choices about both that are synced up with each other. It is definitely an option to put a provision like this only in rules of procedure. You are correct that in principle, it is better, it is best to place any given legal provision in our code or charter at the lower level of legal formality that's required to your point. However, I will say with respect to much of what's in here, and I'm not speaking to non interference in particular when I say this, but with respect to much of what's in the proposed charter provisions here in this local law that we're discussing tonight. The city manager is a major position for the city. The idea that key elements of how the city manager would interact with the common council and do its job would be addressed in the city charter, I do think is appropriate. Just like other key positions and obviously the mayor currently is addressed in the charter. And frankly, just like the city manager per the local law that was approved at referendum is now also to some extent addressed in the charter. So I do think the charter is an appropriate place for much, if not all of what's in this local law. It sounds like you agree with that. And so, yeah, there there are definitely policy choices at the edges here about which particular provisions end up in the charter and which ones you might want to bring to either the code or council rules of procedure. I think those are definitely valid choices, as is the policy conversation around this clause.
Dixon.
Yeah, and to that point, like
Yeah, and to that point, like I could go either way. I see the, I'm trying to remember on the boards that I've served on. Whether, like, this is a good practice. I think it's well understood whether it's a government or or a nonprofit with a board of directors or corporation with a board of directors that, you know, micromanage. So I guess I'll just throw in there too, that if it's in the charter, there's some protection for the employees of the city in case council becomes really irrational in the future. But I could go either way. And but I still share the concerns that have been expressed. And so I think there's some tweaking that could be, we had.
Any other comments on this point? I know that we will take this up at the August 2nd council meeting, so perhaps we can agree to wait until then for further discussion. Robert?
Thank you. Just clarification point. So we will be discussing but not voting on the August councils that you're suggesting. So that was just a question. I, because I'm unclear as to what you.
No, 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 that's a good question. So I, my impression, is maybe the right word to use, is that I'm with the exception of agenda, the last agenda item regarding BPW on here, that all the other items on this list could be discussed or voted on as council sees fit at the August council meeting. I will say that the sooner council, which doesn't necessarily mean it's the August council meeting, but the sooner that council reaches clarity on terms around the city manager's position and the rules that will govern that position, the more stability that we will be able to provide to the recruitment process, which Ian can, I'm sure, speak to more. And these, this local law helps with that. So that said, to pass a local law, as we discussed earlier, so I won't belabor the point, it has to be laid on the table in its final form. It sounds clear to me that there will be further amendments forthcoming. So I think it's very unlikely that a final vote would be plausible at the August 2nd council meeting.
But we would have the September meeting still. Okay. Cynthia?
Okay, one last significant change then. So again, if you can send us the Word document on this, so we can provide it in a redline form.
For the local law, sure, yeah.
I would also include a charter amendment that would include mention of, let's see, officers who serve as the deputies or assistant department heads of their respective departments and appointed by their respective department heads. Since in 2021, we did not envision a deputy city manager for public safety. I think we need to include mention of this position as a position to be appointed by the department head. Because it's not included in the 2021 local law, and I don't think it's included here. So let's just.
You just want to mention that in the charter, along with other deputies, that that position exists, is your point?
Right. To be appointed by the city manager.
Yeah, I guess.
It's appropriate to do it now.
She's not in the local law.
It's not, it's not, it doesn't exist now.
Adding something.
It, we, I think we all presume that there is the creation of a deputy city manager for public safety. This is something that council has agreed to. It was not in the 2021 local law when we talked about department heads and deputy department heads. It's not here because we aren't talking about deputy department heads. So I don't want to miss the opportunity to fold it in to the new local law, because otherwise it's just an administrative hiccup. We'll have to come back to and address, just like who chairs the Capitol Parks Committee.
Just for clarity, it is mentioned in here, but maybe not in the way you're suggesting. 2C, yeah. Yeah. 2C.
Okay.
Under duties and authority, so B to C.
Oh, yeah. And without limitation means it's not just those positions that can be appointed.
So I was referring, so we do have a section of the charter, Section C5, about elective and appointed officers. Officers who are appointed by department heads of officers who are appointed by the city manager. So I think it should be folded into that section as well.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're getting at. And also true that it is addressed in one form in 2C now.
Getting late.
Yeah, how, are there other critical questions? Points to be included? Robert, I see your hand. Just a moment. It, there was one comment that it is getting late. I will say that we will not be addressing what is number five, BPW, on the agenda tonight. That will be discussed at a later time. But Robert, go ahead.
Just two suggestions from other charters in New York State that I had had the opportunity to read in the last two days that I think would be worthy of inclusion under B, Section 2, what I would call subsections Q and R, which do not exist at the moment. My first suggestion is adding a responsibility to, quote, "Develop and implement a program of annual evaluation of all city employees for the purpose of maintaining and improving employee performance." And then R, to provide staff support service for the mayor and common council. Just two suggestions for us to mull over as part of those responsibilities.
I don't want to drag this on anymore. It's late, but I don't know what you mean by the second one, to provide staff support for common council.
In the same way that we're including a lot of like rote things that are important for the job and implicit, but require statutory authorization. I just maybe it's covered elsewhere, but I just feel like the ability for council to request staff support on legislative initiatives should probably be included as a responsibility. Unless that is covered elsewhere.
I think that would I would like to see that in writing, because, you know, if you're going to make a suggestion for additions, why don't you provide that in written form? And we can consider that when we discuss this at greater length. Okay. I do want to move us along. So we've been talking about the local law. Are there comments? And I almost hesitate to open this because, again, this was sent on Monday. The template, template employment agreement or contract. Again, we are not voting on this tonight. There will, however, be a a discussion at the August meeting. Are there, are there comments on this that are crucial to make tonight? August is going to be a long meeting. All right. So I'm going to suggest then that we take the time to review the template and come to August 2nd, prepared to discuss and comment and vote on that. Dixon?
Can I also suggest, just like Robert will probably send some text around, like, feel free to email all of us ahead of time and not just bring stuff to August. And not only bring stuff up at the August discussion.
Yeah, to that same point, I do want to note that depending on the type of feedback that we receive, if from council, if that feedback is substantive and we don't receive it until the August meeting, to the point that you're making, we might need time beyond the couple hours in the meeting itself to make adjustments that are being requested. So that, whether, if August 2nd is the first time that we receive some substantial feedback on this, it may not be plausible to come to a vote at the August meeting. And if anyone, well, yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. I do want to move us forward though, because there are other significant areas here that I would like council input on. So item three is update on the search process. I think we've been talking about that. There is a resolution, but before we turn to this resolution that addresses a proposal for the search team composition. Ian, did you have any comments to make in advance of that on the search process?
Just a couple of short ones. One is that, you know, when we look at the search process, you know, one of the first pieces of information that is usually readily available is a formal recruitment brochure. So I have certainly some missing pieces to that, some of which we discussed today, including certainly compensation, but but I started to work on that because obviously then we could just insert in the missing pieces at the appropriate time. So we're pretty much ready to roll. And that would be my hope and my goal, that once we get the full clarification and confirmation on where we want to be with salary and any other, you know, major pieces to some of the items discussed when the local law was brought up or the, you know, employment agreement particulars. But yeah, that's really ready to roll. I've been sort of hinting at the fact on professional networks and LinkedIn and some associations I'm involved with that it's forthcoming. So I have had actually a couple of inquiries already from interested parties or just, you know, people that are requiring on where this is going and timing and and some questions and things like that. So that's where I'm at. But certainly, you know, it will be a waiting period until such time as we get those final confirmations and clarifications. But in the interim, continuing to work through that. And one of the questions is really on, it's more of like down the road, but just kind of addressing, having council address it at this point in time, which is, you know, a search committee or a search team and the composition thereof. And I'll turn it back over to you, Laura, to guide that along.
Okay, thank you. So in the packet, there is a proposal, a resolution for a search team, an executive committee of council. As we see tonight, it is important to have lengthy discussions in which all of common council is involved. These are important decisions that everyone has to be engaged in. At the same time, there is a need for what we might consider calling an executive search team of council members who would report fully to common council. Sorry, I'm just searching for this now. And one, the suggestion that is before you tonight is for an executive search team to work with Ian. Let me take a step back. As the position is formally advertised, as we have the brochure, position formally advertised, applications will come in to Ian, who is retained as our consultant, and to HR. There will be some initial screening of applicants. And then set of applications will come for consideration by council. The proposal you have in front of you, this is 3A, is a proposal for a search team to be comprised of four-member executive search team of common council members. The thinking is that both of our standing committees are chaired by obviously members of common council, having council members on those committees. The, so that would include Rob Gerhart as Chair of Planning and Economic Development, Robert Cantelmo as Chair of City Administration, Phoebe Brown, who is the liaison to the Workforce Diversity Advisory Committee, and Alder Person Donna Fleming, based on research conducted previously while involved in the 2021 resolution that came to council and then provided the foundation for the referendum. I will point out, as was mentioned really at the outset of this meeting, that both Rob Gerhart and Donna Fleming served on that initial task force. So having them both serve on the executive search team does make sense. And similarly, the last resolved that is here is the inclusion of four city department heads to serve on the search team. And you see those department heads identified as Chief Covert, IFD Chief, HR Director Shelley Michelle Nun, who also will serve as the Search Committee Chair, Lisa Nicholas, Planning and Development Department Head, and Mike Thorne, DPW Superintendent. What I included in the agenda but neglected to include in this resolution is that the mayor will also be a member of the search team. So for effectiveness, efficiency, this proposal is for your consideration. And the search team would be reporting to the full council. When there are finalists, those finalists would come before council and other key stakeholders, community stakeholders, as their candidacy is being considered. So I'd like to ask for your consideration of two things. This as a plan. And second, the addition of the mayor, which that's my fault, I neglected to include as the, in fact, final resolved. Cynthia?
Thank you. I appreciate that. And thank you for consideration of this. One of the things that I'm very mindful of, you know, obviously I made a reference to it in my previous comment, is I'm very mindful of our commitment to the reimagining public safety process. Implementing just structural change within the city with law enforcement, with inclusion of new divisions of a co-response team, inclusion of lead into how we approach a law enforcement or interaction approach. So given that the city manager will be appointing a deputy city manager of public safety and will have much more active oversight over this department than in the past, it seems appropriate that the Chief of Police should be included in the search committee as well.
Well, I will point out that at the moment, we have an acting Chief of Police, which you all are aware of. And I will also point out that all departments, all council, other key stakeholders, will most definitely have opportunity to meet with candidates.
I appreciate that, but I think what I'm to have that seat at the table as part of the interview process in terms of the questions that are selected as part of the interview process, in terms of evaluating the candidates that are being brought forward in terms of the applications and resumes and experience, to have the involvement of the acting Chief of Police seems important to get that perspective in terms of a department that is. important to get that perspective in terms of a department that is going to be much more actively involved with the city manager than in the past.
Other comments? Donna?
Is the fire department not part of public safety?
It is in, sorry, may I respond? It is, but we, they, the whole reimagined public safety process describes a civilian oversight over law enforcement in a way that had not been engaged with previously. A much more active role in civilian oversight over law enforcement, making sure that there is coordination and inclusion and participation of law enforcement with county mental health services, with addiction recovery assistance, with this new division that we're putting in place. So I think the level of involvement is nowhere near that of what the police department's involvement will be.
Well, again, I will just point out that the police department, the acting chief will have opportunity to meet candidates, ask questions. Yeah, yeah. Phoebe had your hand up, I think, and then Duxin.
I do, I mean, I'm in agreement with this proposal and stuff, but I'm also wanted to just mention that like Donna said, isn't the fire, isn't that public safety? And right now, we don't have a police department that's on board for reimagining public safety.
I don't think that's true. I don't think that's true.
Excuse me, please don't interrupt. And this is not a debate about?
It isn't a debate. This is just an observation. And we all have our opinions. But I think right now that we are still building and healing with the IPD. I mean, I know we have some real cheerleaders for IPD, but we also are still healing and working on building relationships, right? And they will be able to be involved.
Okay, thank you. Yes. I think Duxin and Rob? Duxin?
I was just gonna say, I think, I mean, you can make a case for many of the department heads, like Steve, where the future controller is going to be working with the city manager a ton. And it's already a sizable search committee. I thank the people who are willing to serve on it because, again, going back to a previous conversation, I'll have to bend it for another thing. So I think people who are committed to doing this, I appreciate the time they're going to put in. You know, they'll do the deep dive. They'll all have a chance to give input. And it's actually one thing that I'm ready to vote on tonight because I want to get the process started ASAP.
Yeah, thank you. Rob Gerhart, did you have a point? Anyone else? George?
I think it would be good to include the acting chief of police, maybe even more with no offense, but adding the mayor, I would prefer to add the acting chief of police.
Okay, well, we're not going to vote on this, but I would like, actually, we're going to vote to take this.
Laura?
Oh, go ahead, Shelley. Sorry.
Just, just sort of quickly, I I, I, I think the concern that Cynthia raises is a valid concern. I but I'm, the city manager, going back to what Doug, Duxin said, the city manager's relationship with all the departments, department heads. And we just can't have every department head on it. But I think the deputy city manager who position will be direct, I think there's more rationale given what Cynthia said to, and it will happen that there will certainly be representation from law enforcement and public safety on that search committee. But I think that's, that's the position that's relevant to Cynthia's point more so than city manager.
Thank you. Helpful point to make, Shelley. So the deputy city manager for public safety most definitely will include representation from, from IPD. George?
I'm ready to vote on this. As Duck said, it's helped get things going.
Well, we're voting on referring it to council is the vote. So is there a motion to refer this on to council in its form with the addition of the mayor? Anybody opposed? Well, I can't move it. Yeah. So a second, Donna, thank you. And all those in favor of moving this to August 2nd, council. Okay, and that passes nine zero. Thank you. All right. And then we do have a local law entitled Clarification of Capitol Program Committee Leadership. And Steve, if you don't mind joining us for this discussion, and I appreciate very much you being here late along with the rest of us. I will point out, as Steve is, is joining us, if you look at where is it? If you look at the 2021 email, the September 24th, 2021 email that is in the packet, that includes a list of mayor's primary duties under the current code and charter and how they will change in the new system. And you'll note in that chart that Chair, the Capitol Budget Committee is identified as responsibility of the city manager. So Steve and Ari, if you could please respond to this local law.
You want me to start? Yep. Right. I think there's two elements to this. One is to explain the city's budget process and how, both how that's currently structured, but maybe more importantly, how that is structured in the new system with city manager. Steve can speak to that in much more detail, but the key headline point that I would put there is that there is zero room for debate in the legislation that was passed about who is responsible for proposing a capital budget to the common council each year. That is absolutely the city manager. And so one area, and I will leave the rest of that conversation for Steve to present on in terms of how the budget process works, how it's proposed to work, and how it is in fact structured to work beginning next year with the council manager form of government. The other element to address is on the legal side, simply to speak to the point that there amongst the numerous authorities of the mayor that were deleted from the charter and code and reassigned to the city manager by and large, in the 2021 legislation that was then approved at referendum, there was one inadvertent omission from that list of deletions. And that was the Chair of the Capitol Project Review Committee, which actually has a more formal name in the code, but that's effectively what it's referring to. And it is crystal clear what the council's intent was as laid out here, and that the Chair responsibilities were assigned to the city manager. There was just an inadvertent failure to also delete them from, from the mayor's part there. Yep. So that's the, that's the basic information on it. And I think with that, it probably makes sense for Steve to just briefly describe how the budget process will work with the city manager, especially around the capital projects, capital budget process.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, it's very important that the CEO is is the Chair of this, this committee for capital projects currently. Capital projects are very important to the city. So we develop that through a committee structure. And which includes myself and the mayor, also the Director of Planning and also the Superintendent of Public Works are all on that committee developing all the projects for upcoming year and also the, you know, a five-year to 10-year look at capital projects and needs for the city. So obviously, making this change in structure, just basically would incorporate the city manager in, instead of the mayor there, and would, the city manager would then be the Chair of the committee moving forward for the capital projects activity and then bring that forward to council for approval during the following year's budgets.
So this is basically a technical amendment is probably the basically the characterization.
Thank you. It's a clerical clarification of what had been the intent from the, the beginning of discussions around city manager and the budget.
And it's, as I mentioned, it's important that the CEO is, is at the Chair of this committee. So yeah, that change needs to be made.
Yes, thank you, Steve. Thank you, Ari. So Ari, do we need to vote on this? Vote to send it to August or actually vote on the local law clarifying this? This is?
I would recommend that council, I mean, again, we are at a committee level meeting tonight. I would recommend that council in its far, in its committee of the whole forum, take a vote on this. And if it sees fit, send it on out of committee to August 2nd council so that it can receive a final vote there, which will also give us an indication that we should go ahead and lay it on the table prior to that August 2nd meeting so that it's ready for a vote.
Robert? Oh, okay. Robert moves. Rob seconds. All those in favor of moving this on. All right. Great. Thank you. And thanks very much, Steve, for staying with us. And thank you, Ari, for staying with us. And thank you, Ian, for staying with us as well. And Shelley, yes. Okay, as I indicated, we will hold on item five on this agenda. So is there a motion to adjourn? Yes, go ahead, George.
City of Ithaca lost Abe Lee today. And he was a great, great community member and our condolences to his family.
Thank you, George. That is a tremendous loss. Terrible, terrible loss.
Thank you. Thank you. That's a really great loss. But we've also lost Khalil Bay, Abdullah Khalil Bay, our artist, Ithaca artist. He did the big mural next to the Giac Pool and quite a few more around here. And he was my assistant coordinator with Alliance of Families for Justice. So last Wednesday, we lost Khalil. And this Wednesday, I'm finding out about Abe Lee. Can't believe it, but may they all rest in peace. Thank you.
These are deep, deep losses for our community. Yes. Let's celebrate one another as often as we can. Yes. All right. Thank you, George. Thank you, Phoebe. Yeah, there was a motion to adjourn. It was, was there a motion to adjourn? All right, Jorge moves. Rob seconds. All in favor of adjourn. That's right. I had asked for a motion, then you had something extra. Okay, thank you.